This meeting is being recorded.
I don't think I've ever heard that before. Okay. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. Stephanie, can you do attendance?
I would love to. All right, so Becky Bysel, you know, she'll probably be logging in shortly. Dave Pimble?
President.
Scott Gergen?
Here.
Lisa Hedin?
Here.
Kelsey Waits?
Here.
Brian Davis?
Here.
And Stephanie Mom, here.
All right. So first up is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Right, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. All right, motion carries. So next up is the minutes from the regular board meeting on October 28th. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Pose same sign. All right, motion carries. So recognition of visitors. We have quite a few people joining us on our Zoom today, and I know this one is also streaming live on Facebook, so thank you for tuning in and being a part of our meeting tonight. Okay, announcements and recognitions.
Yeah, so I'm super excited tonight. We've got Sandra Hizakuni here with her team, and I'm gonna call her a team because when I first came on board, Sandra reached out to me and said, "I have this really cool thing I'm trying to put together, and can we do this?" And she's done it, and it's been awesome. And so I asked her to not only come to the board meeting tonight, but to bring some of her team with her because they're doing a phenomenal job in connecting with our students, and I want them to be not only recognized, but be able to share what unique experiences we are having for our kids with regard to online connections with kids and our EL department. So Sandra, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, good evening, and thank you, everyone, for inviting us to the good news section of the school board meeting. It's very exciting to be here. My name is Sandra Hizakuni, and I have taught EL in Hastings District for 14 years. So EL means English learner. So this means students who speak a language other than English was their primary home language. And to clarify, this is not a deficit, this is an asset. It's always better to be multilingual than monolingual. However, acquiring English to full academic acquisition is really difficult. So currently in Hastings, and please remember, these numbers are fluid as families move in and out of our district according to their needs. We have approximately 113 EL students, grades K through 12, representing seven different languages. About 75 of those students are direct instruction. That means they receive direct language, English language instruction from a licensed EL teacher. The remaining 40 or so are what's called monitor. That means the EL teacher no longer teaches them, but they still need a little bit of help from their content teachers to fully access that academic language content. So in Hastings, to teach our EL students, we have two and a half EL teachers and three EL pairs to serve grades K through 12, the ALC, and the District 917 Juvenile Service Center EL students. So pre-COVID, as you can imagine, we were stretched pretty thin. Mid-COVID, the needs of our students and the gaps in our system has been exposed. So following the news and knowing we'd be in this current situation we find ourselves in now, Dr. McDowell did give me the green light to go ahead in the summer and to see what would happen if we were to pair an adult volunteer with an EL student to read a book of the student's choice, one to two hours per week in a virtual format. So the goals being to keep these students connected, to support and hopefully grow literacy skills, to support academic English speaking skills, and to foster a positive relationship with an adult through this really, really difficult time. So we've been able to train 24 volunteers and have connected students to all 24 volunteers. The result has been positive, and as one volunteer stated, "This combination has proven to be a perfect storm of goodness." So the program itself is completely voluntary for both students and volunteers. 75% of our direct instruction middle school students have been paired with a volunteer. Students do not receive credit for this, and they are only pursuing this to improve their individual reading skills. And I'm always surprised that they show up, but they do. The response, care, commitment, and concern from the community has been heartening. This community cares about all of our children, and I'm so grateful that we've been able to make those connections. And I was really delighted at conferences that some parents asked me, "Can my child have a volunteer?" So that was very exciting. So I am happy to answer any further questions you may have, but I really want to introduce you to our volunteer committee. Robbie Hamblin cannot be here tonight, but she's a retired EL teacher and has volunteered with me off and on over the years. And she helps us with instructional things and all things Zoom. So as you know, it's a new learning curve to learn Zoom for everything. Karen Moore is here, and she is our communications coordinator, and she handles all of the many communications that we receive. Bill Spinelli is our overall program developer, problem solver, and data collector. And Ms. Anay Placentia is here with us tonight, and she is a former EL student as well as a high school, Hastings High School graduate and one of our volunteers. So with that, I will turn it over to Karen.
Thank you for having us, and I wanted to say that initially, when Sandra first asked us to help her organize this volunteer reading program for EL students, I was really excited for many reasons. First, I love to read. Second, I have worked with adults and a few students in helping them learn English, so I always enjoyed that. Third, I think it's important to contribute to my community. And fourth, and perhaps most of all, for me, I think this is a really active, positive way to show newcomers to our community that they are truly welcome here. We initially developed a process for this program, and although Sandra has the bulk of the work, we, number one, identified volunteers. All of us helped do that. Number two, Sandra identified the EL students from grades five through 12, and talked to them and their parents about being part of this program. And number three, Sandra identified and collected books, which she had to get duplicates for both the volunteers and their students, so we could be reading from the same book. And number four, Sandra introduced via Zoom each volunteer with their student, which was extremely helpful. And number five, we have, we are holding occasional volunteer meetings with volunteers, so we can share experiences and learn from each other. We've had one meeting and probably will need to be scheduling another one soon. And then we do a lot of communications with volunteers on what their needs might be for Zoom meetings, for school change meetings, and assist them in whatever else they might need. I wanted to tell you briefly a little bit about who we, volunteers are. As Sandra said, there's 24 in total. We had 18 in our initial wave that started in late September, actually started with students in late September, early October, and the second wave of six volunteers started in early to mid-November. We are 18 women and six men. 20 of us live in Hastings, and for, because we're doing Zoom, four of us live in other locations. Out of the 24, we have nine retired teachers, mostly from the Hastings School District. And we have seven other retired people that range from a technical writer, physician, a DNR scientist, a school social worker, med tech person, a children's librarian. That's most of it. I don't think I've missed anybody. We have two semi-retired people helping as volunteers, and we have six volunteers who are also currently working, and they are fitting this into their schedules. So obviously, it's important to them. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my experience with my student. Sandra introduced me to my student on October 5th, and she's an eighth grade girl. She was attending as part of cohort too, until obviously this week. We meet regularly, two days a week, every Monday and Wednesday at 2:15. Usually, I have to call her home once or twice to remind her, but once she, we get started, she is very pleasant and eager and loves to read. Today was the first day. We had a meeting, a reading meeting at 2:15 today, and for the first time, I didn't have to remind her. She was right there within a minute of our scheduled time. She's soft spoken and a bit shy, but she's always likes to read. We mostly discuss what we're reading, like the plot, the characters, the different words. But occasionally, especially today, I get to see one or both of her two cats, so that's kind of fun for us. She'll ask me if she doesn't understand a word or a concept. I will ask her questions to make sure she's understanding. Most of the time, she pretty accurately describes what's happening in our books. Sometimes we have technical difficulties with our Zoom connections, either on my side, my part or her part, but it goes smoothly most of the time. And it always seems like she wants to continue reading. No matter how early or late we start, I'm the one that pretty much has to say, "Well, I think our time is up for now, but I'll see you, you know, next Monday." So she is always very pleasant and very eager to continue to read. And I love reading with her, and I can't wait until I can meet her and read with her in person someday, soon, I hope. Thanks.
Hi, thanks Karen. My name is Bill Spinelli, and I want to thank everybody for having us here. I'm just gonna share a little bit about my experience with my student. I'm a retired physician in this community, and I've been volunteering in schools for a bunch of years, just reading, and I find myself volunteering again, reading. I think it's just a really nice circle I've come around to. I started with my student also in early October. He is a middle school boy. I'm told by his teachers that he's distant learning, and quite frankly, he's very distant learning. He's not going to any classes. He's not showing up for any of his classes. He and I read twice a week for an hour, and he has not, he's missed one class, and that was yesterday, one reading time. That was yesterday because he had a doctor's appointment. He shows up within 30 seconds of our appointed time every single time during the week, twice a week. So obviously, this has some value and some meaning to him. Like Karen's student, he's quiet, shy. Unlike Karen's student, he doesn't want to share anything with me. All he wants to do is to read. I've given him all kinds of opportunity, both open-ended and closed-ended questions, and I get the same one-word answers. It makes no difference what kind of question he gets. And when we read, we're reading a book that he chose, and he reads about 75% of the time, and I read about 25% of the time. And I asked him why he liked, you know, why he's reading, why he keeps coming back, and he likes this book. It's one he chose, and it's the most interesting book he's read. And I think that because of a pretty significant positive. It's also very clear that he wants to read with me. I'd like someday to be, know that perhaps we can establish some other kind of relationship. But as I said, the fact that he keeps showing up on time, unsolicited, twice a week tells me that there's a good future. Thank you.
All right, I think I can share my experience now. Well, good evening. My name is Anay. I, like Mrs. Hizakuni said, I graduated from Hastings High School in 2015, and because of Hizakuni, who took me to Hamblin, right after graduating, I went there, and so I graduated in 2019. So it was, since then, I guess I do have a full-time, full-time job now. But when Hizakuni let me know at the beginning of the fall that this program was starting, I was really, really excited. Although I have found some time to meet with my student twice a week. At the very beginning, you know, it was difficult to find the time to really get on the computer. There was like technical issues, but we found the time, and those first few meetings, I was the one initiating the conversation, sending the message as a reminder that the phone call, our Zoom call was about to start. But after that, my student was the one messaging me and letting me know the day before if that was happening again. So we've gone into a routine. We've been able to go over a lot of vocabulary words, spending a lot of time on pronunciation as well. And for me, it's really special. It adds another level of importance because my student, it's in seventh grade. I was in seventh grade when I believe Mrs. Hizakuni had us read The Lightning Thief. And that was the first book that I read to cover, and it really started my engagement with books. Since then, I think it has built my confidence. I think after that, you know, to feel as a, as a part of like, to build your confidence and be, you know, you feel comfortable with the rest of your peers at that age. So, and I feel, and I hope, I guess, that that's the case for Emily, especially in these difficult times, being away from school, the school setting. But additionally as well, I founded a very, I found that it was a very important experience. Because as Emily and I, or as a student and I, continue to meet up, we've been able to share her interests as well as my experience as a student in Hastings. My experience at university, her interest in maybe pursuing nursing, what that may be for her, what may, may that look like for her, which I think is very important as an ESL student, to see someone who is similar to you and see, have an example or a resource that you could go back to if you need in the future. But yeah, that's been my experience so far. Thanks, Hizakuni.
So thank you so much, Anay, Karen, and Bill for coming along on this journey with me, and if anybody has any questions, we're here to answer them.
I have one question, and that's, is this something you're still looking for new volunteers for? Can people get involved if they're interested in getting involved? Or do you feel like you have enough volunteers? Where does that sit?
That's a really good question. I get that quite a bit. So at the moment, I, I we're kind of covered, but we're always kind of on the lookout and trying to identify if this would work, you know, because some, there have been a couple times when we tried to pair somebody with, and it just like, yeah, this is, this isn't working. This is, this is not going to happen. But I guess if somebody is interested, we should probably take those names down. And in the future, perhaps like in December, we might have another wave of volunteers.
So if there are people watching, say this from home, and they say this is a really cool program, can they email you about it, or?
Yeah.
I don't know. I just know that, you know, I don't know how many people watch this on Facebook, but you never know.
True, true. Yeah, that would be fine, and maybe we should just start keeping a list of people, because I've been asked by other people as well. And that's the thing that is really exciting to me, to hear so many people say, "Hey, do you need more volunteers?" Because I know of some other people who are interested in this. So I think even though this is like a really indescribable time right now, I am just heartened by the goodness of people wanting to make those connections and wanting to make a difference. And so as it, it can't be just the school community, you know, the greater community as well can help us, and I'm excited by that.
Does anyone else have any other questions? No? Well, I'm glad to hear it's going well. I know I, I had gotten an email when this first started, and it sounds like a great, I mean, a great program, and thank you so much for pulling this together and and working on keeping those connections going for students. It's really great.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right. So do we have still on announcements and recognitions, anything else to discuss?
That was it from, from us.
Okay, then we will move in to the OPEB presentation. Just going slow because I've said it wrong a couple times today.
Okay, Jennifer, did you want to make some introductions? Can everybody hear me okay? This is Jill.
Yep. So we have Jill here today, speaking with us from Hildy, and she'll be covering a short presentation on our OPEB study, and then I'll provide a one-page summary towards the end. Can you see the presentation?
Yes, yes. So should I just kind of tell you when I'm ready to move to the next page?
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm Jill Erdall, and I'm an actuary at Hildy Incorporated, and we're a division of USI. So we're right here in the Twin Cities, and I've been working with your district for many years. It's probably back in 2016 that I presented to your board the last time. So tonight, we're, I'll just give you a summary of your most recent kind of valuation results for other post-employment benefits that you offer to your employees from your district when they retire. So we're not talking about any public pensions this evening, so no TRA or para benefits, but it's your post-employment benefits that are housed within your contracts, mainly post-retirement medical, dental, and life benefits that you offer to your employees. So here, I just have on the slide, Jennifer's showing you on your screen, just the points we'll go over tonight. Again, you have a little background on the post-employment benefits. They're disclosed under different statements with the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASBIE. So all of them encompass your post-employment benefits, but they do get disclosed in your financial statements, kind of in different buckets. So retiring medical, dental, and life under GASBIE 75, GASBIE 73 is pension-like benefits, but non-perior TRA. And GASBIE 16 is payouts of accumulated unused sick leave benefits. So again, all post-employment benefits, and you'll, if you peruse your financial statements, you'll find all of these disclosed there, again, driven by the different rules in the GASBIE statements. So your largest liabilities come from your GASBIE 75 or your OPEB post-employment benefits. So we'll talk about those first. So Jennifer, if you want to go to the next slide. I want to give you an overview. So for each area of post-employment benefits, I gave you a little summary slide to give you an overview of what those benefits look like. So for OPEBs or GASBIE 75 benefits, you've got two types. You've got what we call the implicit rate subsidy benefit due to our state statute in Minnesota on insurance continuation. And then you've got direct subsidized benefits. So usually, how much of any health premium might you pay and for how long? So we have direct subsidized benefits again, and then those implicit rate subsidy benefits. And that's what forms your OPEB or post-retirement medical, dental, life benefit picture at Hastings Schools. In the most recent valuation that we looked at, Jennifer sent us 564 active participants that we included in our study, and we looked at 49 current retirees that are on your health plan also. So you can go to the next slide. The next few slides I just gave you so that sometimes a picture will help. I get a little glassy stare sometimes when I say implicit rate subsidy benefit under GASBIE 75. So because of our state statute on insurance continuation, when a public employee retires, if they meet certain minimum eligibility requirements, they're allowed to stay on your medical and dental plans indefinitely, but the kicker is you also have to offer them the plans at the blended or group rates that active employees are receiving. So as a retiree, that's a deal. So we figure out how much of a deal that is for your early retirees to be able to stay on your plan, even if they had to pay the full premium themselves. And GASBIE views that as one benefit. Now, if you go to the next slide, Jennifer, here's the example of that benefit. So if you were a 60-year-old retiree from the Hastings districts, you're running about $1,186 per month in claims, health claims costs. But even if you had to pay the full premium yourself, that premium would be approximately $683 or so a month. So you're really getting a hidden or implicit benefit of about $500 a month, because in Minnesota, the public entities can't charge you more than that $683 a month. They have to offer you that coverage at that rate, rather than age-grading you and charging you more to cover your claims. If we were in Wisconsin, they could charge you more if they wanted to. A lot still, you know, offer the coverage at the group or blended premium rates. A lot of corporations will allow early retirees to stay on, continue to pay the blended rate. But again, it's viewed as a benefit, but it's a little more of a hidden benefit. So I'll just give you a picture here to see what that is. And then, of course, we also value the, how much of the $683 do you pay and for how long? And that's what forms your OPEB benefits at the district. So the next slide, Jennifer, that is another picture. So the implicit benefit that we're talking about is in that blue box between the ages of 55 and 65. So again, it's the difference between an early retiree's actual health claims costs and what they're paying on the flat line. So the, the area under the graph there is kind of where that implicit or hidden benefit is captured. So the next slide is now a picture then of the process that we go through in coming up with the liabilities for your district for all your post-employment benefits. So Jennifer's group pulls us together, your actual participant data, census information. You do have an irrevocable OPEB trust or assets backing up some of your liabilities, so we gather that information. Of course, the GASBIE 75 or OPEB report is based on claims and premiums, so we gather that information. And then, of course, each district or city and county in Minnesota has different post-employment or GASBIE 75 benefits. So we review all of your contracts to pull all those different OPEB benefits out of the contracts. We then put all the input items into our black box, or we do our number crunching. Then we get all the results that, of course, then get disclosed in your financial statements and that you strategize with then going forward, so that you can pay these benefits to your employees when they come due. So the next slide. Now the good stuff. So just to highlight what your liabilities are in your most recent study, we'll focus on that actuarial accrued liability. GASBIE wants that disclosed, so we'll give you the present value benefits, which includes future service in your actuarial report. We'll give you that. But GASBIE says, "Tell us what you have as a liability for what your employees have earned for their service to date." So to July 1, 2020. So that's the accrued liability of the 8.3 million, again, for those post-retirement medical, dental, life benefits that you offer within your contracts. If you want to split on the kind of benefit, about 3.6 is from that implicit rate or hidden subsidy benefit, and the remaining then, let's see here, the remaining 4.7 million about is direct subsidized benefit. So how much of a premium do you pay and for how long? If employees meet certain eligibilities when they retire to get that direct subsidized OPEB benefit. The other number you'll probably be curious about is in this 2020, 2021 fiscal year, you're expected to pay, you know, roughly about 800,000 in benefit payments toward these OPEB payments. So the 8.3 of accrued liability, that's what shows up on your government-wide balance sheet. And then again, your expected benefit payments, though, this school year are about that 800,000. Usually, those are the kind of the two numbers that people are most interested in. Now, on the next slide. Again, I wanted to highlight for you that you do have the irrevocable OPEB trust, so some assets backing up the liabilities. And you can see, as of July 1, 2020 now, you're at almost 4 million in assets to, again, that 8 million or so in liability. So roughly about 47% funded right now, assets to liabilities on that GASBIE 75 post-retirement medical, dental, life basis. I only highlight here the trust for these OPEB or GASBIE 75 benefits, because in the state, this is the, the only benefit area that you can officially establish a trust for with assets to back up the liabilities. The other two pockets of benefits we'll talk about can't have assets or The other two pockets of benefits we'll talk about can't have assets or trusts behind them just because we don't have a statute in the state that allows you to set that trust up. But you do have one for OPEBs, which is great. Uh, the other highlights I should give you here are that back in 2016, I think when I was at the board meeting, you just started to establish a pre-funding pattern or to try to add and get to a better funded position of your assets versus liabilities. I think when I was telling Jennifer, when I was back there in 2016, you were only about 15% funded. So you've made great gains over the last few years and you've stuck with your strategy. And those reviewing your financial statements would view your funding percentage very positively, you know, as a percentage of your liabilities. So you've definitely made gains and progress there, you know, in that pre-funding strategy. Okay, the next slide, Jennifer. Now we'll highlight those other two pockets of liabilities. Your GASB 73 or pension-like benefits that you offer to your employees are kind of based on a um, a set number of days that they accrue per years of service when they retire. It's multiplied then by their daily rate of pay at retirement. And it's a non-OPEB benefit because it's not a mandatory healthcare benefit. So usually, these are paid as a contribution to the 403B or in cash. And that's why they're captured here under this GASB statement. So the next slide. Here, you can see it's a much smaller liability. I didn't cut out the the last three digits. So here we've got full value, so 308,000 of these types of benefits. So versus the 8 million of OPEBs, you can see this is smaller, but again, just a different disclosure for a different type of post-employment benefit. Your expected benefit payments here for this next fiscal year are about 118,000. So so far, we've got 900,000 or sorry, 800,000 or so for OPEBs, another 118,000 here. And the next slide is the last group of post-employment benefits. When we call them GASB 16, but it's really any benefit that's paid out at retirement that's based on accumulated unused sick leave. So again, sick leave accrues for you days that are not used at retirement, then those are multiplied by the daily rate of pay at retirement. And most of the benefits or quite a few of your benefits throughout all of the post-employment benefits have sunset clauses on them too, so a higher date restriction. So in order to be able to grow into these when you retire, you had to be hired by a certain date. Or you can think of it as there's groups of employees that are haves or have-nots as far as some of these post-employment benefits go. The next slide. You can see this is a little bit of a larger liability bucket than the GASB 73. So you've got about a million of accrued liability here for these accumulated unused sick leave benefits. And you're expected to pay out about 304,000 in benefit payments this year. So overall, in post-employment benefits, you're at about 9.6 million of accrued liability. And then you can see between the 800,000, 300,000, and 100,000, so you're probably at about a 1.2 million benefit payment expectation this next year. Alright, the next slide. So as I mentioned back on the asset page, you've been following a pre-funding practice. And the calculations around that now with the GASB statements call it an actuarially determined contribution. And it's a little bit of a deceiving title because we really don't determine it. We just do the mathematics for you. But the contribution is set based on your funding policy. So we've sent Jennifer a couple exhibits and I think she attached those to your board materials along with the full reports so that you'd have all the full details behind you in case you're having trouble falling asleep any night. You can pull those out and look them over. But um, yeah, so the, we do these calculations to help you then come up with what will you contribute this year toward these post-employment benefits to help then in your pre-funding strategy and follow your funding policy. So we look at what your accruals are, what your interest cost on your liability is. And then we're catching up a little bit on your unfunded liability to help improve that funded status. And that's how these A D Cs or actuarially determined contributions are developed. The next slide.
Jill, do you want me to show the summary and then we'll come back to that last slide? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so. So this is the summary that any of the board members that were on back in 2016 would be used to seeing. But this shows, you know, each, from each study, what the total contributions would be. You can see that we've been adjusting that amortization period. So back in 1617, 1718, there was a period of 18 years. The next study went to 16 years. And then the recommendation for tonight for the 2021 and 2122 will be a decrease of another two years. So we'll be going to an amortization period of 14 years for the OPEB portion. So that's the health and the pension that goes to the healthcare savings plan. So that total, it's broken out on here by fund, but it's a little over a million dollars. And then the accumulated sick leave pension, that piece is also, we're adjusting the amortization period. So back in 1617, 1718, it was kind of split by fund, but we were at 13 years and six. And then in 1819, 1920, we went to 11. And then for this study for the 2021 and 2122, the recommendation is a nine-year amortization period. So the conversations that we've had in the past is just that the board was looking to make inroads on that pre-funding in both of these areas. So that's the, that's why there's the recommendation to continue to reduce that amortization period.
Yeah, any, any questions at all on your liabilities or your contributions or the benefits?
I have a, a question about the amortization period. Is there an intent, Jen, to, to continue to reduce that by two years? Every two years? I mean, is, will there be a point at which it's not amortized? Or are we always going to have some period that we're spreading it over based on the number?
Yeah, well, I'll kind of jump in there. That amortization period is really catching up on the unfunded, you know, portion that you have of your liability. So on the OPEB side, remember you've got some assets backing up the liabilities. Um, but in essence, when you catch up on the unfunded portion, each year you do have accruals because all of, all of the employees that are actively working at your district during the year they're actively working, they're kind of getting closer to getting their post-employment benefits. So they have accruals for that year. And then, of course, you have some time value of money on the accrued liability there. So kind of when you're caught up on, you know, the unfunded portion of your liabilities, then your ARCs or your A D Cs will look more like just having to keep pre-funding or expensing what's being accrued in that current year um, to kind of keep up with, you know, then having enough assets on hand to pay the, pay the benefits when they come due. So you ask a good question, Lisa, because any, any amount of, you know, you're, so you're pre-funding on your, the pension and the unused sick leave area. That's, that's, those monies are held in an internal service fund, so they're not in an official trust. So you're doing that as a district just so that you don't have kind of some surprises in a year or your general fund doesn't take a bigger hit than you think it might because of, you know, some benefit payments. So you're kind of getting ready to pay those in that fund. On the OPEB front, you know, there's the two kinds of benefits, the direct subsidized and the implicit or hidden subsidy. So um, you know, I always get asked from districts, what's the correct fund, funded percentage? Or how much asset should we have backing up that liability? And it is a different answer.
To be clear, Jill, that was my next question.
Yeah. So, right, so it's, it's a, there isn't one correct answer. You know, any pre-funding is going to be looked at very positively. Uh, so, but for example, I pulled out your, so your direct subsidized liability is about 4.6 million of your 8 million sum total. So you can think of your direct subsidized as, you know, those are the benefits you're paying directly to the retirees. So, you know, you almost have 4 million in assets now. So you're almost, you know, fully funded on that direct subsidized benefit area. So that's great. So at some point, you wouldn't have to keep pre-funding as much if you would choose not to because you've got those direct subsidized kind of benefits covered. Or your funding policy could be, we want to put in enough so that we stay fully funded on the direct subsidized portion. You know, the, that hidden or implicit benefit is a cost, but you're paying for that now within your overall active total healthcare cost, you know, cost at the district. But the um, direct subsidy, you know, payments or benefits that go to the retirees, you know, that could, that's kind of a more of a, you pay attention to that closer because it feels like a hit or a cost to your general fund directly. So my point is, is that, you know, you're, you're 47% funded so on a total basis. But, you know, you're pretty well-funded, 83% funded or so on those direct subsidized benefits only, which is great. So there's no right answer. At any time, you could decide to, you know, could continue with the same pre-funding pattern. Um, and the amortization periods are going down just to catch up and make some gains on those unfunded percentages like you have since 2016. So that's great. But again, you don't have to feel like, um, you know, the funding policy can be altered depending on what your situation is. And there's many ways to look at that and continue to be healthy though in these areas versus what your liabilities are. So did I answer your question, Lisa?
Yeah. Yeah, you did. And actually, you went a bit beyond it, which I really appreciate. And I mean, I certainly believe we should be pre-funding. I mean, I think that's the responsible place to go and I definitely support that. Um, the work that our district has done to get to this point. And I would like to see us to continue to get to a slightly stronger position. But, but that was a good comprehensive explanation. Thank you.
Yeah, and there is another interesting point that you should all know about. And I think, Jennifer, you have that, the next slide, is that right? So I, I, I talk about these pieces as, you know, you have different financing levers to pay for these benefits when they come due. So you can, you know, be in a pay-as-you-go mode, meaning your general fund, you know, will just budget and pay for the benefits as they come due. Or you'll have this irrevocable OPEB trust that you do to pay, help pay for benefits when they come due. And then the state also has a possible annual OPEB levy. Um, they put some restrictions around it because they kind of don't want blended districts like they call a district like yourself because you've got an OPEB trust and of course, the OPEB liabilities. But you can possibly apply for the annual OPEB levy, again, with some restrictions. So M D E says, we're only going to allow you to apply for an annual levy on your unfunded portion of your benefits. So for about 53% of your benefit payments, you could apply for the levy. And then another kicker is though, you have to have sunset clauses on the OPEB benefits that are in your contracts in order to be able to levy for them. You don't have to have sunset crosses, sunset clauses across the board. Uh, you can levy by contract group. So that's the situation for you. You have some OPEB benefits that have sunset clauses on them and you have others that do not. So I know the question everybody always wants to know is if we decide to levy this year, what could we possibly levy for? Um, based on, you know, what our sunset clauses and benefits are right now. So that's about 210,000 that you could levy for to help pay for the OPEB benefit payments along with having the OPEB trust or again, you know, general fund paid for some. But this annual OPEB levy is another lever or finance area to look at to help strategize and pay for the OPEB benefits also. So back in the legislative hearings when they were talking about adding this option, they put the sunset clauses as a requirement to have because, you know, they didn't want adding OPEB benefits to contracts to become a runaway train. So that's why they say you can levy for it if you have the sunset clause in place, um, you know, or that higher date restriction. Um, Jennifer and I looked at, so currently, your teacher group does not have a sunset clause in place on the main benefit. If you could get a sunset clause on the teacher's OPEB benefits, the amount you could levy for would pop up more to about 400,000. But again, currently, based on the current sunset clauses you have in place, you can levy for about 210,000.
We looked at what the impact of that 210,000 would be to our taxpayers. So on a residential property valued at 250,000, it would be about $13 per year. Just to give you an idea of that ballpark.
And I think with that, those were the highlights that I wanted to get to you for all of your post-employment benefits. Um, again, they kind of just get disclosed under the three different buckets, but about 9.6 million of accrued liability in total, over a million dollars or so in benefit payments this year. And then your, your assets or that OPEB trust is almost at 4 million. And then Jennifer does have all the information on the pre-funding plans for this year. But again, I want you to know that those are based on your funding policy and you can drive that funding policy as a district. So there's no rules there that, that, you know, you have to follow one funding, funding policy or another. But your, your funding policy has done well for you, increased that funded percentage. And then, of course, you've got this annual OPEB levy option also. So in a good position with your OPEBs and other post-employment benefits. And um, lots of little, different things to look at or strategize, but you're in a healthy position.
Can I ask a question um, with regard to potential OPEB levy? And, and this comes up more in our district, I think, than many, Jen, but that's, how would a, how would an OPEB levy apply to egg property?
Oh, um, I'm not sure on that, on, um, Jennifer, if you know that, I'm not sure how the OPEB levy would affect.
I know, sometimes that gets applied differently to either.
It is different than on a residential property. So it's based on a value per acre. So like on 5,000 acres, it's about 14 cents per year. So you just have to figure out how many acres you're looking at.
Okay, say that one more time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that makes.
I might have gotten lost in the order of magnitude. So if it's a 5,000 acre.
5,000. So its estimated market value is 5,000.
Oh.
Per acre is 14 cents.
Okay, that makes more sense, right? So it's, if it's an acre that's valued at $5,000.
Yep.
Um, market valued at $5,000, it's 14 cents.
That's what we were providing.
Roughly, roughly.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Alright, that makes more sense to me. I think I heard it the way you did, Scott.
Yeah, so your typical 160-acre farm is probably looking at somewhere in the ballpark of sub $25. If all 160 acres is valued at $5,000 per acre. Because 100 acres at 14 cents an acre would be $14. Right?
2240, 22 dollars and 40 cents. You know where the, you know where the question really comes in though, it's the guys that are at thousands of acres.
Right, and there's two different rates, whether it's homestead or non-homestead.
Yeah.
If it's non-homestead, that, those rates are almost double.
Okay. Alright, I just, I just wanted to get a scope of that. I know that kind of comes up more here than in many suburban districts.
It's a good question.
So you'll see later on in the night, there's action items to approve the recommendations based on the, the summary document that I've shared.
And to be clear, the recommendations do not include a levy.
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, that's just, I just wanted to be clear that we didn't, went from one conversation to another. That it, that this is in alignment with our current practice, with our recent past practice. And that the OPEB levy is, is just an alternative funding method that we are not recommending at this time.
Yeah, it's always good. I, I kind of always encourage everybody just to know all the different possibilities so that there's not a surprise and especially in these times, you know, we've been asked more and more about different possibilities. So just wanted everybody to know that too and what's available. Yeah, so if there's any other questions ever, you can feel free to reach me at any time. But, um, and then, you know, Jennifer too has all the details and you've got them there too. But, you know, feel free to whenever you have to pick this up again, or if you get some questions, you can, you know, call us at any time.
Thank you, Jill.
Yeah. Thank you. Have, so am I okay to pop off now?
Unless you want to stay on all night, you're welcome to.
So, alright, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Jill.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. And thank you for making sure to clarify that, Lisa, so that the community didn't think all of a sudden we were approving a levy tonight. Um, alright, so next up is the, the audit.
Um, alright, so next up is the, the audit.
Okay, so I'll share that document also, and then I'll introduce Aaron Nielsen from MMKR. And he'll be providing the audit report.
Great, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Alright, fantastic, so, um. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Nielsen. I'm a partner with MMKR, uh, the independent. Uh CPA firm that conducted the audit for this past year end. Tonight, you should have a couple of documents you received in packets, the financial statement as well as our management report. And then as Jen mentioned here, we've got our PowerPoint presentation or. You know, PowerPoint presentation to go through, so there isn't any surprises. I haven't created any new information here. Uh simply some graphs and tables I've taken from our management report to share with you, so. Uh, I know you got a lot of financial information tonight, so I'll, I'll move through this pretty quickly. Uh, we'll start with our role as independent auditors for the district to provide an opinion on your district's financial statement. Um, the information they put together that we use to uh provide and assist with the preparation of financial statements is fairly stated for the district audit. Uh, we also have the requirements for the reports we've provided tonight with the internal controls and compliance. With that financial statement audit under government auditing standards, uh, the also the requirements for the Senate. Federal Single Audit Act, so you do receive well in excess of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. Of federal awards that require some additional testing for, for those dollars. And then we also have the Minnesota Office of the State Auditors, state laws and regulations. Um, that legal compliance manual report we've issued, so. With that, I'll get right down to our audit results um on the next slide here. Please to report all summarized on one document here, uh, or the one slide we have issued what is known as an unmodified or clean opinion. On the basic financial statements of the large document that you received this evening. Uh, meaning that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty and for the year then ended. Uh, this year you'll notice there was an extra paragraph within that opinion. And plus emphasizing the implementation, implementation of a new GASP standard for GASP statement number eighty four. Um, which required the student activity dollars to be moved into the general fund. Past, we previously have a separate uh report for student activities, which is now included within your general fund. And then there have been some changes with some of the fiduciary activities and how those are reported for school districts, so. Um, that was all implemented this year, which had an impact of increasing uh that general fund beginning fund balance and the end of the wide financial statements. As mentioned, um, I had pleased report, we summarized all the internal control and compliance. Um, reports under one bullet here, we had no material weaknesses to share with you this past year. And we have no instances of non-compliance to report, so uh very good audit results this, um, we'd like to present for you this evening. Moving on, my next several slides will focus on that general fund, your primary operating fund, so. The slide you can see before you this evening uh shows ten year history. Uh, these cash and investment balances unrestricted fund balances. And then expenditures as of June thirtieth and the expenditures for the year ended for each of those years that we've presented this past. Uh, within the slide here. As you can see, there was an increase in the cash investments balance as a year end and an increase in that unrestricted component of fund balance. On my next slide, we dive a little deeper into the components of fund balance, so. Uh, the previous slide, we were talking about the unrestricted. Components of fund balances, you can see here, but when we look overall, you can notice the increase in total fund balances from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. And I'll just focus on that for a little bit. Uh, the non-spendable captures anything you prepaid or inventory that's captured as a year end. Uh, the restricted balance, you can see there's an increase over the prior year. And what we identified there is the reason for the increase, there are dollars that you've got restricted for long-term facilities maintenance. Uh, capital and as well as then some of the other state funding restrictions, student activities that were rolled in and scholarships. Then you can see we've got the unrestricted balances where there's a little more local control, what you've committed for fund balances. Uh, the assigned category, you can see there's an increase over the zero balance for the prior year. And that, that's simply that the district uh has an adopted budget for the twenty twenty one fiscal year. We're gonna use some fund balance, so um we're setting that aside within that assigned category. Um, to recognize it's basically already accounted for, captured with the plan, the deficit spend the following year. And then everything else falls into that unassigned category. So um, uh, as you can see, all that has down to calculations of a percent of your fund balance of total current year expenditures for each year. Uh, and again, the district has continued to meet your fund balance goals for the general fund and, and all of your funds that you have fund balance policies for. The next slide, um, we look at your adjusted ADM and the resulting pupil units, that average daily membership for the ADM. Uh, looking at a ten year picture here where your enrollment has been, where it's at estimated as a June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, as you can see, the enrollment or that average daily membership that we're estimating at twenty twenty or the district's estimating is at four thousand three hundred and fifteen. Students, which is a slight decrease of thirty two from the prior year. And about a s- seven tenths of one percent, so less than a one percent decrease, but. Uh, as you can see, the district has a slight decrease in enrollment each of the years that we've presented here. Looking at the general fund, a couple more slides here for the, for the general fund. Uh, you can see we've got your revenues, looking at budget to actual to prior year and the broad categories of property taxes, state sources, federal sources. And then the other category, and as you can see here, uh, if I had a total column for you, the. Total revenues for general funds past year amounts to about fifty seven million dollars, just to give you a scale for the size of your organization. Uh, which came in very close to what was anticipated in the budget, as you can see, absent of any significant variances when you look at the graph. Uh, within two tenths of one percent, just slightly under what was projected in the budget. And then about three percent, three point one percent over the prior year. Uh, a lot of that increase within the state sources. Uh, with the improvements in the general fund or general education, that basic formal allowance, increasing two percent this past year. Uh, there was an increase for special education funding. And then we also noted us, schools and achievement and integration funding within the state sources. So accounting for the majority of the increase, which, which also makes sense because it is your primary source of revenues within the general fund, so. State sources accounting for about seventy one point two percent of the revenues in the general fund. Followed then by your property taxes at about twenty two point four percent, so you can see a, a, a. Heavy concentration between just two sources and the taxes and state aids making up about ninety three and a half percent. Um, which is not unusual with the ISDs that we work with, that, that seems to be a common uh breakdown between. Taxes and state aids combined compared to the remaining sources. The next slide, we look at your general fund expenditures, uh similarly looking at a budget to actual to prior year comparison. Uh, within your financial statements, you can see we provide a more detail where it breaks it down further by program and then these uh various categories. Uh salaries and benefits. This past year, the district expenditures in the general fund amounted to about fifty three point five million dollars. Coming in under budget about four point four percent and is an increase of about one point two percent uh as anticipated. Coming in under budget then, so uh that increase was planned and a- actually expect a little bit more. Uh, as you can see, each one of the areas that we presented here. Uh, shows the district's good budgetary controls that you have in place, uh, actually all the categories are coming in just under budget without any one of them standing out. Um glaringly compared to others, uh, capital expenditures can be impacted by timing and, and obviously the challenges with the. That began in March with the pandemic and distance learning and, you know, had an impact on not only this one, but a couple of the other funds as we'll get to. Um, and, and then I also wanted to point out as I have in the past with your salaries and benefits, making up a large concentration of the spending to educate your students. Uh, that we do see with our other districts, uh coming in salaries and employee benefits that. Costs to complete the education number, the students in the district, making up about seventy nine or close to eighty percent of general fund spending for twenty. Twenty, June thirty, twenty twenty. My next slide, um, just from a comparison standpoint, we've just looked at the fund balance for the two. Other operating funds, food service, special revenue fund and the community service fund. And we, we look at just the fund balancer and don't have all the detail, simply do the scale, the operations, the. Uh, as we mentioned, it was about over fifty million dollars in spending for the general fund. By comparison, the spending within the food service special revenue fund. And that community service special revenue fund totaled about two point or two point five million dollars for each one of those individual operations. As I mentioned, both of these funds being impacted with changes in programming due to the COVID nineteen pandemic beginning in March. I know you're still continuing to be challenged by that, moving forward as all our districts are. Uh, at year end, the fund balance percent for the food service remains healthy at that twenty nine point nine percent of. Their current year expenditures, uh, the community service fund you can see saw a decrease. Uh, as largely as anticipated in my budget, uh, that ended with a twenty seven point two percent fund balance. Uh, that was after the general fund made a transfer to help support operations of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars this past year. And I've got just a couple more slides. The next slide we have is just a picture of the combined operating results of your internal service funds. So you currently operate two internal service ones, one for the self-insured dental plan and then one for the self-insured health plan. So as you can see, a combination or the two funds are consolidated in each of these year for the past three years, going from eighteen nineteen through. The twenty fiscal year end, uh, seeing an increase in that net position, uh, slightly less than the increase you experienced last year from. Eight hundred and five thousand, but again, seeing an increase or improved net position at year end by six hundred and fifty five thousand, six hundred and fifty six thousand. Uh, at the end of twenty twenty to the about five point six million in net position. And then my last slide that I have for you, um, to this point, we've talked about your individual funds and what I believe most of my districts, how they're operating, looking at that. Uh, from a budgetary perspective, uh, this, this slide tends to be a little more challenging for me to share with me. Uh, school districts and that it's consolidating all the governmental funds together, incorporating the internal service ones or. Um, combining them, but then we're also capturing that long-term perspective where we're uh including. Long-term capital assets, your buildings, the other infrastructure, as well as then the long-term obligations, so the bonds payable. Uh, the pension adjustments, so in this line, uh, that we talked about, you can see we're looking at obligations in the forty six million dollar range. Which is a lot more than what we were just talking about at the previous presentation, but. The bigger part that we're capturing here then are the P E R A and T R A pension obligations, uh, in addition to your local pension obligations. So when we look at your organization as a whole with that long-term perspective, you can see you saw an increase in the net position of about two point eight million dollars. One thing I wanted to point out is you can see at the very top line there, the governmental funds, they talk about a change of about eleven point four million dollars decrease. And I just got done going through your individual funds and that was all positive, how they improved and increased in the general fund, so. That overall increase of eleven point four million dollars is largely uh presenting that construction activity that you have spending down. Resources, the bonds within the building construction fund, um, and then going right to that next line with the increase in capital assets that we can see. Breaking down on how that comes into net position, the bottom half there, that net investment in capital assets. Uh, is really determined how fast you're paying off your debt compared to depreciation and how quickly you're setting assets aside. Uh, I noticed in presenting for this, you can see there's an increase in the restricted category there. Um, and part of that is an increase in debt service and one of your bonded obligations, you're setting them aside restricted and the payment is at the end of the bond obligation. So that in increase in the restricted for debt service, uh, really will offset that net investment in capital assets in the future when that bond is. Is paid off at the end. And then the last line, everything else will fall to that unrestricted category, so. Uh, as we talked about, the improved financial position of the general fund this past year helped improve the unrestricted category just slightly. That general fund increase was slightly offset, as you can see, by the pension adjustments up above of about two million dollars. Um, but overall, uh, seeing an increase in the net position uh for your district as a whole, so. With that, it gets me through, I know I moved pretty quickly through a lot of information, um. Just if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and take a moment to wrap up when there's any other questions.
Alright, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Nothing here, Kelsey.
Okay, sounds good.
I wanna thank your staff and team that you have there too, because, you know, clearly it was a challenging year with the audit, uh. You know, the audit is always a challenging process too, but uh to incorporate them working remotely and, and sending files to us. We do appreciate the extra efforts that entailed, so, um, thank you, the, you and your staff and appreciate presenting the audit.
Thanks, Erin. Always good to see you.
Yeah, thanks, Erin.
Take care and be well.
Thank you, you too.
Alright, so next up on our agenda, we'll continue with the throwing numbers at us tonight, is budget adjustments.
Alright. Let's green pop up for everybody.
The audit one.
Wrong one. Never mind, I'll try that.
It was so much fun, we can listen to it again.
I'm trying to give you a break from numbers. Is that better?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, so, um. Tonight, what we wanna do with budget adjustments is like we talked, we've, um. You know, as we've started every one of our budget adjustment conversations, um, we've been trying to ground everything in this guiding change document and what we're. Getting at with their desired result. And so, uh, for tonight's conversation, we're really talking about. Kind of a culminating piece, right? So our deficit, our deficit assumption for the twenty one, twenty two school year was somewhere between one point two and one point seven million. And to this point, we've had four board discussions about budget adjustments specifically. Um, and along the way, we've uh provided communications and information through surveys and our website and our radar updates. To try and help people know where they can find information or be a part of, of that process if they so desire. And there's two main parts to our budget adjustments, and the first of which is these non-class size adjustment options, um, that we've. Worked through in the last four meetings, and the slide that we have up here is a slide that you've seen before. Um, it's really the areas on the left-hand side that we've decided are, are viable for us to be looking at. And then over on the right-hand side are the most specific numbers we can get at this point in time. And so we round that out for our non-class size adjustment options of a potential of around two, a seven hundred and twenty eight thousand. Uh, dollars. So then we jump to the second part, which is the class size adjustment options that we've talked about to this point. And this slide is the same slide that we saw last time, it's un- unchanged. And uh, we talked about elementary staffing changes, uh, middle school staffing changes and. Um, talked between a seven period day and a six period day, and we thought that with those. Items that are in the middle column, we could get to around the figures on the right-hand side for a total potential. Um, adjustment of just over one point four million. This slide is the adjusted class size. Um, adjustment options based on our last conversation, and so in the middle column here. You'll see three highlighted numbers. We've gone from uh three. Uh, elementary staffing FTE changes to two, we've gone from four middle school staffing changes to three. And we've gone um from nine to seven staffing FTE changes at the high school. With uh the removal of the six period day as an option, but a seven period day. What you will notice however, is that by making those changes, now in the right-hand column. Um, as we've uh kind of used that funnel approach where we've gotten um a little more specific each time. You'll see that our one point four million dollars has shrunk to nine hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. Due to those changes in FTE, um, as per recommendations from our last conversation. I included this slide, it's nothing new. Um, and it's, I know it's a lot of information on the screen, but just to remind people. When we talked about the first, uh, the first part of the staffing reductions, what we did is we used a formula. Uh, up in that right or left-hand column, our corner rather. And then what we looked at was how many possible um reduction of, of FTE could we get out of the high school if we. And then what we looked at was how many possible reduction of of F T E could we get out of the high school if we work with class sizes? And the same for the middle school and the same for the elementary school. And then the bottom left chart and the right side chart are simply showing what our current averages are for our class sizes and areas and what the class size averages would be if we made these reductions in that top left. And so this is just a reminder for everyone that we aren't pulling numbers out of the air. We're actually trying to use some formulaic options in order to, or formulas to come up with some options. So that boils us all the way down to this slide, our summary slide, which really what we're talking about and what we need to have some formalized business meeting discussions about is based on where we've landed, non class size adjustments, we're at about seven hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Using the modified adjustments to the staffing changes at the three levels, we're at about nine hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, which is a total of one point seven million as it's on paper right now. And then I will bring you back to what our deficit assumption is because what one part of the conversation at our last work session was, do we want to go to the one point seven assumption? Do we want to go more than that? What does that mean? And so like with anything, everything in this equation has a, has a reaction, right? So if we reduce F T E, then that reduces the amount of dollars we save in class sizes or in the class size options. If we reduce anything in our non class size adjustments, it reduces the amount of money we can adjust there. And so at this point, I'll stop talking and have that kind of be our lead in to our discussion or your discussion about a couple of things. One, is there anything on this that we would want to potentially move to an action item tonight? Two, is there anything we need more information about between now and December ninth? And then three, do we just move all of this into some version of an action item or items for December ninth? So Kelsey, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah. So I guess, does anyone have any questions? Now on the file, for some reason that I have on board book, the summary is not showing up. So I'm not sure if anyone else is having that issue, but if people are following the leader, I can't pull up that slide. Does anyone have any questions about this? I I would kind of like to know with these numbers, what does that put us at for our class sizes with each school?
Jen, do you have a spreadsheet that you could pull up with that range on it?
Don't we have it on there, Bob? If you go back.
Hang on a second. So.
Because this is based on the previous numbers that we had, correct?
With, so you're asking about with the two, the three and the seven?
Correct.
I do. Just give me one second.
And then Lisa, I see you unmuted too. So I assume you have a question.
Yeah, I was, I have a, to speak back to Bob's issue, and I think we've looked at the non class size items. A number of times and they haven't changed the last couple of times, other than maybe getting more refined. So I would feel comfortable moving those to an action item just for, one, because they haven't changed and we've been consistent and two, to kind of just keep the process moving. So I would adjust that. I would like to have a little more conversation about the the class size piece, but. I'm not sure if Jen's still looking for numbers or not.
Yeah, it's, I don't know if I'm comfortable just shooting them off, like maybe we'll, we'll update it because I just want to make sure. It's, you know, like our staffing model was coming up with three. If we try to get that down to two, we just have to go through and adjust grade levels. So we'd have to kind of understand what grade level, like are we most interested in adjusting? Are there certain ones that we're okay with in order to get to that two? That's kind of the hard part of adjusting the staffing model is just knowing where you want those adjustments made.
I can appreciate that. Oh, sorry, Bob.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I can appreciate that. I do think that that my understanding of both the community survey and the the board's discussion was to prioritize maintaining small class sizes to the extent practical at the elementary and lower secondary levels. So to me, that's fifth grade, quite honestly, like K five. And I felt like when we saw the metro S Q numbers for average third and fourth grade, they started to feel uncomfortably large. And maybe only to us because we've been fortunate to keep quite small numbers there. So I think that's where I understood the the numbers to come from. And I will say, I know that at the secondary level and even at the upper middle school level, it really comes down to enrollment or not even enrollment. It comes down to the choices that the students are making and what they're choosing, which classes they're choosing to take and that's post registration. So some of it, I'm not quite sure how to get at an action item honestly in the, in a meeting in December, because we'll still have student registration and district enrollment.
Yeah, so I think.
I don't know if it's a dollar value thing or a general distribution of staffing.
I think it's both and I can't see everybody. So cut me off if I'm cutting someone else off, so I can't tell. So I think let's take it in in part. So the elementary is a little bit easier to figure out class sizes, right?
Here, I can give you an example. So I just adjusted elementary. So if you're looking at Bob's slide where it says like the current averages and the metro X U. So like to get to two F T E, if we left kindergarten at the metro X U, first grade at the metro X U, but then at second grade, we went to twenty two. Third grade, we went to twenty three point two and fourth grade, we went to twenty four point two. That would get us our two F T E at the elementary.
So it'd still be below the metro X U.
Yep. So that's a perfect example. I think Lisa, back to your question and maybe kind of where you're, where the struggle, it's not a struggle, right? It's a, there's a, there's a, there's a yin and yang with this thing, right? Because it's partial dollars and then it's partial class size. And once we start getting into the details of it, then it really becomes this, what's our ability to do what Jen just did? In terms of what are we comfortable with? And where would we take those two F T E out of so that we don't go over what you as a board are comfortable with us being at? So if the board says at the elementary level, you can go to to up to two F T E with those of of making reductions, but you can't go over the metro X U numbers or like Jen just said, you got to stay under in in this. And so I guess maybe with elementary, so sticking just to that, what we could do for December nine is come back with a, if you say as a board, yeah, it's, we're feeling comfortable right now with exploring the two. We've landed on two and maybe even three. Maybe not three, but then we could come back in December with what Jen just pulled up and said, okay, here's what it would look like if we reduced by two F T E for next fall and have a grid like you see on the bottom left that says, all right, it would be K stays the same, one stays the same, but you're going to see a change in second and you might see change in third. And then maybe that be the action item then becomes, all right, we're okay reducing by two F T E maximum at the elementary level. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think we also all acknowledge that come August, you know, you you teach whoever shows up, right? And and there's going to be adjustments to that.
And there's going to have to be adjustments. So then that becomes, now here's the yin and yang part where you take F T E out of it and you say, all right, we're not totally comfortable just saying F T E for that very reason, right? Because we could say right now, we're comfortable with reducing F T E, but then all of a sudden something happens and we need F T E. Now you've not reduced your your budget at all. And so now you shift over to the conversation of what's your comfort level of of getting however you need to get at it, reducing by X dollars in staffing.
Well, and it also to me, and I appreciate that it is yin yang, it is also a timing question. So if we were to make a recommendation in December based on what we know or what we presume and we articulate what we presume around enrollment, I would feel comfortable saying something like at the elementary, a reduction in two F T E class sizes not to exceed metro S Q average. I'd feel comfortable. And then in when we know something different in six months, you know, then we do something different, right? Where I get a little bit more lost and it is a little more complicated is that middle school to high school, because we're going to know something about the class choices, not enrollment, but schedule, that that's going to have an impact and there too. So then to me, it almost becomes a bigger dollar question. And I'll just come out and say, I'm a little uncomfortable. And and I trust Bob, when you said I did say three in the last meeting that that I did say it. But at the middle school, I still see with a loss of two paras and and holding it going maybe from four to three teachers, that's still, that's a bigger hit than I'm comfortable with it, the ele, or well, it's a big hit at the middle school. And where we're, where they've taken, when we look back at our guiding change document, they've taken significant budget adjustment impacts in the past. And then when we look at the high school, you know, we made a choice and I feel comfortable with it that we want to prioritize a seven period day, acknowledging that there is a class size impact to that. And and that's where I feel like the this last proposal that's here right now, I'd like to see that slightly revised. Thank you. Yep, that's the sheet where it says middle school staffing change. I definitely don't want to exceed three for costs of dollar and I'd like to see it say maybe two to three. And it if it needs to be and high school staffing changes seven to eight with a maybe slightly higher dollar value. And that's just, that's just the trade offs as I understood them from our last meeting.
Yeah, and I apologize now, but my notes are on the device that is zooming at the moment, so I can't look them up. At our work session, I know that Principal Esther B had mentioned right sizing in the elementary level. And I cannot remember if he said that the right sizing was two F T E or three F T E. That they would need to do, I mean, regardless of of budget adjustments, they were looking at doing just to right size.
So we would be at right now, based on numbers, we would be at two. So two F T E would would be kind of what we would consider a right size based on of using a formula to do that. If nothing changed. To keep our class sizes kind of in the in that ballpark, right?
Thank you. And then I would agree with Lisa that seeing the two F T E being pulled from the fifth and sixth grade does have me more hesitant there. Just as we talk about keeping those numbers low and is there any way to shift any more of that out of the middle school?
There is. You have to, so I would, I would say a couple of things. I'll flip back and forth between a couple of slides here. So if we go, so anything that we change, right? You really have two options if we on this, on this page. If we re, if what we agree on, I think first is what's the total dollar amount we're shooting for with regard to this. So let's assume that that what we're shooting for right now is that the nine hundred and seventy two thousand. If what we say is we're not comfortable with the elementary piece at where it's at and we're not comfortable with the middle school piece where it's at, then one of two things has to happen to keep us at that nine seventy two. We either have to increase as much as we can at the high school for F T E that we can still then run a seven period day because that's what I heard was we're going to, what the what shifts the conversation is if we get to a point in F T E reductions, that all of a sudden we can't run a seven period day, then we got a whole different conversation going on. So that's the first thing. So the staffing has to be taken out of secondary or looking at this slide, we have to look at that fund balance utilization. If the goal is that nine hundred and seventy two thousand, which then gets us to the one point seven million in adjustments, those are really your two flex points in here. You've got to, you've got to be okay with probably going back to around the nine F T E that we talked about at the high school. And and figuring out where we get nine F T E there or increasing the fund balance amount that we're interested in doing or a combination of the both. The only thing I would point out there is remember that fund ba, fund balance dollars is those are one time dollars for one year usage and they don't come back after you spend them. And so you may or may not need to repeat that at the same level or higher the following year with fund balance. That's the, that's just the catch. And I'm seeing nodding heads. So I think we've beat it to the dead horse that people understand. That's what I want. That's what I want. That's where I want us to be. Because I want you to make an informed decision and and man, these are not fun decisions at all, right? This is the hard stuff. You've, as a board, you've you've grappled with with hearts, with the hard getting it whittled down. And now we're at that point where, okay, how do we want to slice this pie?
Bob, can you go one more slide to the, there, thank you. Yep. So where I was, I'm pointing at something which nobody else can see. So in the middle school staffing changes, the inconsistency I see is does reduce to F T E in fifth, sixth grade, one F T E in seventh, eighth and F T E in media, three. So what happened is I understand it from just looking at this is a modification was made in the dollars and a highlighted number was introduced, but the text associated with it wasn't changed. So. I think that's part of it is that I don't think we know where they're going and that that text is carried over from previous conversations. You know, and I don't know, I feel that where we settled after our last work session or and obviously, you know, you get to change your mind after a work session is the elementary staff changes of two around that right size piece. The middle school staff change around two, acknowledging that they're losing two general ed paras as well, which is a, is a unique characteristic that we even still have that to be lost. And the high school period would would go up to nine, but maybe it only needs to go to eight. So I think the question maybe for what can we do now and what can we do in December? What do I need to know is what I might need to know? What I could accept is everything on the non staffing side. And we can leave the fund balance number off, right? Because that becomes a part of this slide in a way. And then on the ninth, we see something about two at the elementary, two at the middle school and the associated class size impact. And eight at the high school with some associated projection of registration, because I think we're, I feel like where the conversation is coming down to is the number of F T. The number of FTE at the high school versus the amount of the fund balance.
So yes.
Oh, I got a note from Brian too that's along this. Um, he's just having a hard time talking tonight and that was just that. He feels like pushing everything to the high school. It feels like it's devaluing that four years and um, that that. Seven should be the tops for the high school. Just wanted to make sure to put that in. So sorry to interrupt, Bob.
No, I think that's a fair statement, but I also think that when you look back at our guiding change document. You know, piece of that is acknowledging that the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen cuts. Were substantially born at the elementary and the middle school. They just were. I mean, that's that's the reality of that, that period of cuts and I. I'd like to understand with the number. Because it is unsustainable to to fund a a budget difference out of your fund balance. It it just is.
So I think the other thing with that high school piece, um, that's different than the elementary and in some regard, the middle school is. And I know Mike's on here cuz he's gonna be talking a little bit later, but I think if you remember how Mike shared before and he's got this laid out. Is. At the high school, an FTE is not necessarily equivalent to one person, right? It might be equivalent to three point three FTEs across different areas. Um, or five F T, five point two FTEs across areas. Whereas more than likely at the middle school on the elementary level. An FTE is a is is a of a full time person for the most part. And so. When we would say something like, we're gonna let's let's be okay with moving up to eight, that's an option. That's gonna be the way that Mike has it has it laid out. Is we've got a whole progression of what are the next point two, point one, point three across the whole building. That would be the next layers of reductions to get us to the equivalent of a another FTE. And so I think that's an important thing to note is that it's reducing pieces of things and not whole things. Whereas at the lower levels, it is reducing a whole classroom here and a whole classroom in most cases.
Dave.
Okay, this is my take on this and I kinda agree with what Lisa's saying, you know. Everything, the uh, non-class adjustment dollar. I can live with that. We kinda, I think that was a pretty solid number when we talked about this before. I think that I do agree with the earlier statement about. Uh, the middle school and elementary and, you know, holding to the two, but maybe. Sliding towards three at the middle school. And I I do think that I remember that discussion from our work session. Uh, you know, look, we have that seven number in there now. My my opinion is that, uh, you know, we could tweak that seven number up. You know, maybe one, maybe a little bit more than one. To get us to our our one point seven million that we're gonna need in the twenty one, twenty two. Cuz face it, folks, I think that, uh, you know. Dollars are gonna be tough coming forward and and. We'll be back at this again, probably somewhere along the way. And I think that, uh, you know. We moved this whole process towards the ninth of December and, you know, maybe. There might be a little tweak in the numbers and the dollars that Jen can show us, but I think that that's the route we're gonna have to go on.
I just wanna say, Dave, I I really appreciate that. And and actually even last time when you jumped in at the end and reminded us. That this is the work of the board and it's ongoing work and it's not one time work. And, you know, we don't have to. You know, that really helped like ground me in this effort. It's about solving the problem, the challenges at hand. And then being ready to solve it again when it's the next challenge. So. I really, that really helped me move through that seven period, six period conversation and it it's really settled my thinking over the last few weeks. So. Thanks for that insight.
Along those same lines, I think we need to be cautious that we're not setting ourselves up for tackling that next change next year. Okay, we need to set, we need to set a path that sets us up for. The foreseeable future. Obviously, we're in the middle of a pandemic. A lot of things have changed since the first of the year. A lot of things will change again, you know, by the time school starts again next year. So we we just need to be making the best decisions that we can with the information that we have. But I don't wanna shortchange ourselves and then find ourselves back in the same position next year. If at all, i- if we're working uh, uh, off of the data that we have in front of us again next year.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree. And yeah, I agree too. And I think that that's where it links into the. Not trying to solve too much of this problem with the fund balance. Because that that then does put us in a position of needing to make it again, having to do this again next year.
Yeah, and I still agree with this goal of hitting the one point seven mark. And I know that that's the top of the range that we're expecting, but I think that sets us up as well for that longer term. Um, and I'd also rather shoot high than low. Any other questions, comments or thoughts on this one?
So I'm gonna roll out some specifics on some class size stuff. For December.
Yep, and Brian did just send a note out, um, that just says. He thinks that even as percentages, that that is a lot on the high school. Looking back to twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen is fair, but he doesn't wanna make this decision because we feel like it's a particular group's turn.
I wanna be clear, I don't think it's their turn. I'm not, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think. The middle school was put in a position of needing to move to a six period day. They came to move to a six period day as part of a big budget adjustment. And and we are now at a place where that same question came to the high school over the last six weeks, six to eight weeks. And the strong response that we heard is. Okay, the six period day is a lot. That's the the cost of that, the the, not the dollar cost, but the social, emotional opportunity costs are high. So we're gonna trade some class size stuff for that. We're gonna straight class size for that because we believe that other piece is valuable. I I don't think that this is a case of being a turn. I think it's a case of who's already. Done the restructure, substantial restructure. To take some of the costs out.
And when we look at this overall, um, I mean, from the very beginning, we knew that in order to get to the number we needed to get to that. There was going to need to be a big change at the high school. And it was just a matter of weighing which change we felt. The most comfortable with, what the community felt the most comfortable with and have that kind of guide us as we. We made these decisions. Scott, I saw you unmuted.
Uh, yeah, I I was just gonna comment. I I think I really appreciate Brian's comment on this and and. I don't think in any way, shape or form are we looking to say, well, it's so, you know. This group went last time, so now this group goes this time. Absolutely not. It it needs to be. Looked at with fresh eyes. Uh, and and evaluated for the situation that we're in. What I see when I look at this. Okay, personally, I value small class sizes K through four. The most. I think that's the most important. And then the middle school and then the high school. And that's simply driven by the maturity of the students that you're dealing with. Now, when we look at the middle school, five, six, seven, eight. And we look at this page and we say, what are our current averages in five? You know, for English Language Arts, we're slightly below Metro. Six through eight were slightly above, nine through twelve were slightly below. In math, again, slightly below in fifth, slightly above in six, seven, eight, slightly below in nine through twelve. And and that trend basically continues in science, all all of them are slightly below. Social studies, all of them are slightly below. So I I think that more than anything is what is driving the recommendations here. Or the numbers that we have worked up thus far.
I didn't even notice, I didn't even notice until you said this, Scott, but. And we've only looked at this slide like four times, but right now our class sizes are. A little bit larger in six, eight than they are in nine, twelve. And I get that that's that there's a whole bunch of stuff being jammed into just one little tiny table. But I do think that also speaks to the. The staffing piece because I I think we saw, heard that in the community, the class size priority is. K for middle school, high school, smaller size to being capable of managing a larger size. A- and that's not even reflected in our current practice.
And then Becky, just a second, Scott. Becky had um, her hand up to say something.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, um, when we are increasing for the FTE in the high school that we are not, I would like to see kind of where that would go. I know we can't say exactly where they are. I just remember the beginning of the year, um. The high school was spread thin in few areas and we were helping them. And especially with the pandemic and I know. This is an abnormal year and next year will be too. I just wanna make sure that we're not spreading them thin, even thinner when we come back into the school. And I get that we, you know, these are hard decisions to make and I really appreciate all the input and what we've done in the past and. Do what we're doing here. And I don't wanna go do this again next year cuz this has not been fun, but with the pandemic going on, we may have to. You know, kinda may have to do it again next year. Unfortunately, you just just kinda see what we can do for these kids to kinda get back into a routine. These teachers, you know, I think it might to have to hard look at it, what we can do for one year. And then maybe have to look at the hard stuff again next year and they say, okay, now really we can do this. Once the pandemic is cleared, the kids are back in. Teachers are back in, we're, you know, we're all back in our normal life. So that's just kinda how I feel about, you know, I don't want things, but then. If we can't, and then if we do have to like a X next year, I don't want to, but we might, I don't know, maybe we will have to in certain areas.
Alright, and then Scott, sorry.
Yeah, just a quick response to Becky. I think that's a good, I think that's a good point that we could. It is a possibility that we could be back here next year. And as challenging as it is for us as a board. And as hard as the decisions are for us as a board. The ones that are impact are the kids and our staff. So. That's, that's the primary reason. That I don't wanna, I I don't wanna be foisting change upon our schools every year. Or or I I want to minimize that as much as possible. Yeah, I I think, uh, the other point I I remember now I was going to make is that as we're looking at these staffing adjustments and as we're looking at. English, math, science, social studies, we have to keep in mind that not all of the English classes are created equal. Okay, so something like a college lit that is being taught or s- may may certainly be. Considerably more rigorous, considerably more demanding on our staff than perhaps some of the other classes are. And we're not, we're not even talking about some of our other classes like our physical education, our health, our. Uh, industrial arts of all varieties that we have, a lot of the electives that we have, our foreign languages. So we, we we can't just focus on these four. We have to keep all of them in mind.
That's a good point. There's a lot of pieces to this decision that can't necessarily be captured in a, in a table. And that's why I'm glad we have such a great team of administrators, you know, working on this, far beyond what we see. Kind of brought forward here.
So I think all of that, uh, right back to the question of. For the, for December. Are, what I'm hearing is, we'll we'll try to detail some stuff out with, are are we okay with two at the elementary level? I hear that.
For for my part, the changes that I saw at the elementary level still keep us in a good position. In terms of class sizes.
Then. I'm not seeing anyone shake their head, no. Um, then for middle school, are are we sticking with three or am I, are we working on two now?
I would be like, I would like to be working on two, especially now that I am seeing some of those class size trends. Where currently at our middle school i- is larger than our high school. And is la- and is currently larger than Metro S Q. Uh, so I'd like to be working on two.
And I'd like to work on seeing, I agree with Lisa, I'd like to work on seeing what that two would look like. And just, um, how that would if affect the numbers or if we bring that then to up at the high school. Um, how would that affect class averages at the high school?
Yeah, I I I, we we have a model here at three. I don't think it hurts us at all to have it modeled at two. Uh, and I think, you know. Looking ahead to the next question you're asked, you're going to ask, which is the high school staffing changes, you know, modeling at seven and modeling it above seven. You know, whether, you know, to Dave's point, that's one more or or thereabouts. Um, I think, I think is worthwhile. We have to, Brian asked a question in the chat and and this is, uh. You know, what does the number become at the middle school at two? And Lisa responded saying, I presume two thirds of two, two hundred and fifty one thousand dollars, which I would guess to be. Uh, you know, pretty, pretty accurate. So you you're probably looking somewhere directionally. Uh, over the eighty thousand dollar mark. We have to remember that we have another lever that we can pull here too. Okay, if we choose to, and that is, we can make that change and. Just come in with a with a lower number or we can make that change. And say, okay, we're okay with a larger amount coming from the fund balance. Now, we have to weigh that against, what does that look like for future years? You know, because we all know carrying, you know, just reaching into the savings account and and paying, paying for ongoing expenses. Then very next year, they're gonna be there again and doubled.
So the idea of moving, of keeping elementary, moving element, moving middle school to two and making high school to eight is the. Is going to have the least impact on class sizes. You're gonna see the least impact cuz you're able to spread it across for the most part, a larger. Group at the high school again. Cuz then that leaves with the, with the final question is. Are we, are we shooting, still shooting for that one point seven? Meaning the nine hundred and seventy two thousand ish area.
Two million before, I think we have to be at the high end.
I think we need to stay at that one, seven or right there about somehow in there. And and looking at it, you know, because it came down from the two ish, just like Lisa said. So I think we should be staying there.
And Brian also says, um, to stick with the one point seven. And Jen just sent a note that says going down to two at the middle school would be one hundred and seventy eight thousand. So. That does drop us about seventy thousand then that we're short. Shorter.
Which more than likely we'll pick that up if we add eight to the high school. Which more than likely we'll pick that up if we add eight to the high school.
Yeah, I'm, or since the high school does, yeah.
Like I shared before, as we do that at the high school, it, it gets spread across point twos here and point twos there and then to Lisa's original statement, it'll really get refined once we have registrations going into the year. Um, but, but that, again, that will have the, the least overall impact on class size by doing it that way. If you're still wanting to stay at the one, seven, which I think is a good idea right now. Um, to do that. The other piece of this that leads us into, you know, that conversation of having the board in the future. Really work on setting what are the class sizes we're comfortable with as our maximum class sizes in every grade level. Right? Because that will help us be really consistent on how we make changes. It, as we, as we go through these ebbs and flows, um, and at, as we continue to be at the spot where um, we need to continually adjust our budget and, and right size here or right size there and this.
Dave?
I think through the discussion here, I think we've pretty much got this covered. Uh, my opinion now is we take this and move this to an action item for the ninth of December, there might be a little tweaking on that, uh, just like Jen was talking about what the dollar amount is in there, but I would like to see this moved to an action item for the um, next meeting on the ninth.
Okay, then are we going to move this down to an action item tonight with the, without the fund balance in it for now? Is that what I heard earlier?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I would say that would be the right thing to do, right? Okay.
Um, Brian, is your question the, if we were just talking about moving the non-class size adjustments down to an action item, not the adjustments at the sorry, I just got a chat from Brian. Um, I don't quite understand your question about the specific reductions at each grade level unless it's wondering if we were moving that to an action item tonight, which we are not.
Okay, I'm going to try this, but it's gonna, hopefully you can understand what I'm saying. I had oral surgery today, so it hurts like all get out. Um. What I'm saying is, is just, I, I just wanted to see if Dave was suggesting we move the non-class size stuff today or the non-class size and the school F T E related piece as well.
I guess what I was saying is that I was following through with the idea that the non-class size stuff we'll de- deal with tonight, but also move uh, the additional class size stuff. So it gets on the schedule for the ninth of December.
So what I'm understanding is our direction is to, is to non-class size minus the fund balance piece goes on for an action item tonight, anything related to class size. So this conversation, we're going to retool this for the ninth and it will become a conversation on the ninth.
Agreed.
That's how I understand it. Yeah, I get the thumbs up from Lisa.
All right, we can do that.
Okay.
Sorry for all the typing tonight, guys.
No, do what you need.
You're fine. I'm muted, sorry. Um, all right, so then I guess we will move that down to an action item or at least the portion of it. So thank you for the discussion and we'll see what happens next month. All right, so then moving on, um, as there are a lot of policies tonight, um, but we should be able to move through them pretty quickly. Uh, so first up, for our first reading is policy four sixteen, which is the drug and alcohol testing policy. So if you can see, um, a lot of these changes really just had to do with the addition of medical cannabis language uh into the policy.
And I see that and are we as I read it and I certainly could be reading it wrong, we
You know what, freeze for one second.
Okay.
Becky just reminded me, we need a motion to move that to an action item. So we're going to backtrack. Um, and make a motion to move um, the non oh, how do we want to phrase this? All right, a motion to move the non-class size adjustment options minus the fund balance to an action item.
So move. Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Becky, for catching that. And now Lisa will, will jump back down to the policy four sixteen.
Okay, yeah, good catch Becky, thank you. So my, my read on this um, policy is that a person could have any medically prescribed drug with them at school. Using it within prescription, but they cannot have medical cannabis, is that? If it's prescribed, I might.
It depends. So there's two to that, two parts to that piece. One is um, there are some, so first of all, the first thing to note is that the, the policy and what they changed in this policy is differentiating between having a prescription drug and having a prescription drug that was um, prescribed to you by a medical doctor. So those, those are the first two categories. Um, and that's, so.
Who else gives you prescriptions?
Well, that's where the medical cannabis comes.
Okay, clearly I don't know how to get medical cannabis, but.
Right, so um, there's it is not as simple as you can have a medical uh, a prescription for a drug and be at work because there are some controlled substances that you can get prescribed, but if you have to be on them, then you can't be working while you're on them. Right? So there's that piece. The medical cannabis piece is specific to the in order for you to qualify to using that medical cannabis as per the statute, which is as per this policy, because the policy was taken right out of the statute. And I clarified this with our attorney this afternoon. It, it only qualifies potentially to be okay to use while you're at work if it was first prescribed by a medical doctor. And now you go to the second part of it, which is is it in such a format that it would impede you from doing your job, which then as a organization, we would say, hmm, just like another controlled substance while you're on this, you can't be at work because of what your job is. Does that help?
That, that helps a lot. Um, and as long as we're, you know, we're sort of treating it, medical cannabis the same. I mean, I could appreciate why it wouldn't because of some of the federal legislation that still exists about it, but I just want to know that we're treating it about the same as any other prescription medic- medicine. And your point is valid, right? You, you can't be at work and you can't be doing certain portions of your job on different medications that you might be on. So, okay.
So we are treating it the same as other prescription controlled substance medications. Are there any other questions or comments about this? Okay. So next up is policy four seventeen, which is chemical use and abuse. Um, and so if you open that up, you can see the changes. That I made. And again, for people who are interested, if you do want to see the whole policy, if you go to board book, um, you can follow the leader and I'm opening them up as we go, just because there are so many policies on there tonight, if anyone wants to see them. There any questions about this one? Nope, all right. Next up, policy four thirty two Hastings Employee Social Media. And so we do not currently have a social media policy, so this is a new, a new policy. So were there any questions about this?
My only question is, where did it come from? Who's already got one? I think it's, I think it's a very well-written policy as it stands, and I think it's something we definitely need to articulate um, expectations on. So I, I definitely support having it. I just curious who's already got it or where did it go?
From Stillwater.
Yay, Stillwater, go ponies.
Yeah, and so this is one that we've been talking about for a while. Um, uh, Superintendent Collins had brought up a social media policy last spring, and so this one has really been kind of in the works for a while here. And we've just been trying to get it out. So. Does anyone see any questions, um, have comments, um, things that we should take back to the policy committee? I'm not seeing any, okay, that's good.
Yeah, look good.
Okay, great. So, um, the next policy is six oh one, school district curriculum and instruction goals.
So, so just for purposes of asking the obvious, I presume um, six oh one, six oh three, and maybe even six oh six have already been run by teaching and learning? Or will be?
Yep.
It's just for confirmation. Okay, thank you.
Yep, Jen Reichel has been in our policy committee meetings, working with us on them, so.
And as a matter of process, that's kind of how, just so as a board, you know, that'll be the, the way we do things as policy comes up. If there's a director that is really closely related to a policy or policy set, we're going to ask the, that director um, to be in on that review because they're the ones that are going to be most closely aligned with implementing those policies.
So were there any comments on this one? There's a comment in the I think that was just from us. So do any board members tonight have any comments on it? Or questions? Either one. Not seeing any. Okay. Moving on, policy six oh three, curriculum development. Did I get any questions pop up through this one? No, seeing none. Okay. Well, this is, we're moving fast here. Uh, policy six oh six, textbooks and instructional materials. Questions, comments? Okay. Next up is policy six oh seven, which is the organization of grade levels and um, this one did have more changes than some of the other ones, and that's just that we hadn't had it structured based on kind of what our model really looked like.
I should, I could have researched this, I'm sorry. Is this a policy that we actually have? Like currently? Or is this just a, a, a new statement?
I can look quick.
I, yeah, see that, that comes into where I could have researched it myself. I didn't even think of it at the time. Um. I
No, we don't.
Okay. We don't have any comments on it, it, I'm, I'm not sure what it does for us in terms of, I mean, I want, I don't want a whole bunch of policies that that don't provide clarity, but, but I
So, yeah.
That's fine.
And one of the reasons that this has come up is actually in, in the definitions with the kindergarten and making sure that we have the specific date set up for um, how old the child needs to be to enter kindergarten. Um, and if you recall last year, um, a parent had talked to us about if a, a student can enter kindergarten early, if their birthday is, you know, before the cutoff date of September first. And that's something that the board could discuss if we wanted to set a policy for that or change our policy to allow that. Right now, we don't. And so this is really just setting that date and setting up the the grade level structure.
I, I, I do have, yeah, I do have a question about that one because when did that change?
What?
What, the part?
The not allowing anyone before September one, no exceptions.
We don't have a policy that has said we can. Um, I'm not sure. I mean, personally, I don't know if there used to be a policy that allowed it. Um, or if it was just a practice, but we don't have a policy for it.
Well, as of, I know as of two thousand and three, there was a policy because my oldest son, his birthday is August twenty fifth and he entered kindergarten.
There, um, so there may or may not have been a policy. Um, but the, the way the statutes read, um, you're supposed to have a policy if you're going to do it. Which you can, um, this, this policy really isn't the policy that allows or doesn't allow for it. This is just the policy with regard to kindergarten on that second page, section three definitions that defines what do we mean by a kindergarten in birth date and enrollment? And then in the great advancement of policy, you'd have a, a section in there. Or early enrollment policy, one of those two. So, doesn't mean it didn't happen. Um, but we, you may or may not have had a policy when it happened, that's all.
Sure, yep, and, and that's
We have a policy, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Five oh three point two, five oh three point two is in here.
Early enrollment.
It's kindergarten age of attendance. And that does set it as five on the first of September of the school year. It was revised in ninety three and again in oh six.
And this is a mandatory policy, um, it must be a mandatory policy, so.
Well, and that's where I, I mean
Right, and you asked what it brought to it. Yeah, that's mandatory.
Okay, so this is my approach about a lot of the mandatory policies. I'm like, fine.
Okay, okay.
Yep, so I guess I just want to be clear that we have a, that we have a policy or procedure for if there were to be an exception.
We do not.
Okay, should we?
Well, and that is something that we can discuss if we want to set that up and it's not something that the board has had discussions about, at least since I've been on the board, so.
It could, is five oh three two, which is the kindergarten age of attendance, is literally three sentences long. And it's one sentence. Must attain the age of five honor before the September first. And
Yeah, and so I, yeah, I think that's a larger discussion for the board um, to have beyond this policy. I think this is a larger discussion about if that's something we want to pursue and we want to start setting up a policy for. Stephanie?
I, I have two comments about that. So with exceptions to policy, because this is something that came up in the policy committee, I think at our last meeting is defining an exception to policy is going to be individual specific. We're, we're thinking anyway, but it is something that we did briefly discuss. Uh, it's something that if, if the board is interested in exploring that, we can definitely bring it um, to, to the committee um, and discuss that further. Um, and then with this particular one, so I know there's, it, I, I like this one because it provides clarification and a definition of the different levels. So like when we were transitioning or are transitioning currently from hybrid to distance learning, um, there were a lot of questions about, okay, well, where does fifth grade fall in? Are they elementary or are they secondary? So this just helps provide that clarification. Uh, never thought that we would have to provide that clarification uh, until now, but it, this, this helps with that as well.
Yep. Thanks, Stephanie. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine. Um, it, it's the same policy as what we have now essentially, and this is, if this is a mandatory policy, then we move forward and we can have a larger discussion later. That's fine.
Okay. And we can have a larger discussion about that one, but otherwise, does this seem okay? For this one? It's pretty straightforward. All right. So then we have policies for second reading, and these can be moved toward to action items if we're ready. So the first one is four nineteen, which is the tobacco-free environment. Policy.
I have the same comment I have before, but I think Bob. Replied to me that it was legislative mandate to have vaping awareness and prevention. That's a legislative piece, and hopefully, next time somebody comes up with a new way to. Get kids to put nicotine in their body. That we act on it a little bit quicker, and we don't wait for it to be called out. Legislatively for education, but I'm fine with it being the only process that's, that's called out. Requiring a certain amount of coverage, educational coverage.
All right, any other questions? All right, otherwise, we can take a motion to move this to an action item.
I'll move.
Second. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Right, motion carries. Next up is Policy five sixteen, Student Medication. So are there any comments on this one, things to take back, or is this one ready to go as well?
I would move it, make a motion to move it to an action item, Policy five sixteen.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
The only question I had on this one were, was, it was called out that no medication was to be carried with the student. Is supposed to be left with the appropriate school district personnel, except, exceptions are prescription asthma medication. Self-administered with an inhaler. And medications administered as noted in written agreement between the school district, et cetera, et cetera. Would that include something like an EpiPen? For our students that have like a major allergy that would require something like, I'm seeing nodding heads, so.
Yeah, would the, and that's where it would become a part of their medical plan with the school nurse, if they were at that spot where they would be in a situation that they got, just like an inhaler. They gotta carry it with them all the time.
Okay, fantastic. I just want some clarification on that one, thank you.
Yeah, and the EpiPen is specifically called out. In part. Eight of K, specific, whoops, I don't know what board book just did, in specific exceptions in part K. And number eight is.
Thank you, I just didn't get that far, thank you.
No, you're fine. Okay. We still have to actually vote on that. So is there any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of moving Policy five sixteen to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign? Right, motion carries. Next up is Policy six oh nine, Religion. Any comments on this one?
Make a motion to move six oh nine to an action item?
Second, do we have a second? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up is Policy six sixteen, which is School District System Accountability.
I'll move this one to an action item. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. So I will give Becky a minute, and then I'll refresh my board book. So we'll start with administrative reports.
Did you say you wanted to wait for, wait for Becky?
No, I'll just refresh in a minute, sorry, as you're, you're talking, so.
Okay. All right, well, I've got a team on here tonight to just go through and help, because it, it seemed like we should do some updating. With regard to, one, our move to distance learning, and two. You know, we want to be highlighting some of our buildings as we work through our board meetings, so tonight, we're gonna highlight a couple pieces from the high school. And then I really want to make sure that we're highlighting and giving you an update on where we are with our Equity Action Planning Team. That's come into play over the last five, six weeks here in Hastings. So as everybody knows, we are, we're in the process, and actually tomorrow will be the first day of distance learning for our secondary buildings. And neck on the thirtieth will be the move for our elementary buildings. And so mostly for the, the general public, you know, we've had questions about why are we moving to distance learning? I don't know that those questions are gonna stay with us much longer with the amount of press that has happened. In the last couple of days, but just so that we have everybody on the same page. On the left-hand side, just some of our counts, so as of today, so this is a real number today for us. Is we're at a hundred and twenty-four per ten thousand. Right now in the county, that's huge, we were forty-nine last week, last Thursday. In terms of positive case increases in the last week, we've had over two hundred and thirteen positive net increases just in our zip code. So five five zero three three, that's not the county. We're at an eight point one percent positivity rate, and just remind people that five percent is considered significant. So that's pretty high. As of today, we have fifty-one staff that are out. We have two hundred and sixty students that are out due to COVID-related symptoms and or close contacts. So we've really hit the threshold of, I can tell you that if, if we wouldn't, would not have made this decision. We'd be in a spot right now where we'd be closing down at least one of our elementary schools, most likely, one by one, because we don't. It isn't that we have so many people that are sick, it's because at fifty-one staff out. We lose the ability to cover classes and do that type of thing, and so it becomes a staffing thing. We have currently in our system seventy-three positive cases so far, just inside of our, our building. So the numbers are up, just like they are everywhere else. For you as a board and for everybody else, how are we communicating as we move along? We're updating our website. We, Jen Reichel has taken over helping us, and Missy has taken over helping us with our website and our Facebook. And keeping everything updated there. We have our weekly radar updates. And last week, we did a midday or a midweek update. We're sending emails out at the building levels. For staff, and then just a reminder, we have our text messaging system set up for, so anybody that has opted into. Our text messaging will now be able to get text messages as buildings send them out. And we have continued our push for translation, so most people will have noticed in the last two weeks, three weeks now, we shifted to. A, our radar update looks different, and that's because everything that we put into radar update through Smore. Can be translated into the languages that we see in our district. So lots of pushing there for us to get as many things in translatable form as we possibly can. And then right now, related to that, our EL department and, and Megan. Miller is working on some videos that are going to be translated in helping. People who are not native English speakers understand how to translate documents. So if that makes sense, we're gonna put a short how-to video, so that if someone gets onto a website, this will talk them through. How do I have, how do I switch the website to, to be in my language? And it'll be spoken by a native speaking, native, native speaking person. And then as a timeline, November eighteenth tomorrow, that is significant for secondary distance learning, November thirtieth. Elementary is in full-time distance learning. We are thinking right now that we're out to December twenty-second for sure. And that's the day before winter break starts. December twenty-second is important, because that'll really be our first time to look at whether or not we're gonna stay out past winter break or not. It's also, as was pointed out by the governor a little while ago, it gets us to about that four-week mark with sports, and so that's gonna be a big week. Just in deciding where do we go. And January fourth or January nineteenth, those are just the dates of. January fourth is when we come back right now as per our calendar. January nineteenth is what would be the end of the first semester. The, the day that we would be back in for the, for the start of second semester. And so that just gives a little bit of a information on the why and how we're communicating in timelines for distance learning as we move forward. I'm gonna have Jen Subert chime in here and talk a little bit about operations as we're moving into distance learning.
Okay, so I'll start with the food piece. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to our food service staff, you know, they really transitioned quickly from feeding kids in the buildings last Friday. To preparing meals to go out for delivery on Monday. Bob, if you'll just go to the next slide, I just wanted to show an example of what they are doing for meals this year, so. Kind of going in order that top left, those are just some breakfasts that are going out, the middle one is. You know, a walking taco meal, it's all pretty much individually wrapped, because we realize kids are getting them for the next day. After that, it looks like there's some curly spaghetti with garlic bread, there's a chicken Alfredo on there. A sandwich, and then we're doing pizza also. So. This is really geared towards the secondary kids, starting next week, we'll also have meals for elementary kids. Because they'll not be in school anymore in person. And those will be menu items geared more specifically to them also. The other changes that, starting November thirtieth, will be sending half gallons of the one percent white milk for students instead of. The multiple, multiple cartons of milk. So we're really, you know, looking forward to doing these meals and providing them, providing them to the community again. You know, that feeds me right into the transportation piece. So we'll be delivering meals on buses, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. They're gonna go to the bus stops at their usual afternoon time. We aligned it with the afternoon bus routes really to provide the least amount of disruption to the. Learning time as well as just keeping some consistency for. The bus company employees as well as parents and students. So again, Mondays will be A-Day kids, Tuesdays will be B-Day. Wednesday with it being a flex day, there will be no transportation, and then again, Thursdays A, Friday B. With that though, there's a lot of flexibility. If a family, you know, can't make it out there on an A-Day, they're more than welcome to go on a B-Day or vice versa. We're just really, you know, trying to get the meals to families in any way that works with their, with their schedule. We've also added courtesy routes for meal delivery, so if families live in the no-walk zones. We'll have buses running within those areas delivering meals. Right now, we sent out the maps for the secondary sites. We'll be sending or including maps in the next radar update that goes this weekend for the elementary buildings. You know, we've received some questions from people that, you know, if they weren't riding the bus this year. Or their child maybe drives to school and they don't know their bus stop location or time. We're just really asking that they call the district office, so. We're using that four eight zero seven zero zero three number, and then we're helping get them the information of their bus stop. And their pickup time. We're also doing a pickup outside of the district office, so it's just a contactless pickup. The table's set up outside there so that they can just stop by and grab meals, and that's every day from eight to ten. And we kind of realized that, you know, this was kind of like the start of a school year, transportation for all students, it's a big, it's a big. It's a big job, so we do know that we had a few routing issues, we think we have them worked out. The elementary principals did a communication to families today. Kind of about the plan for next week and the following week, weeks for elementary students, and we included in there. That they should start reaching out to us now if they don't know their bus stop location, so that we can be sure to get them that information before Monday. So we just really appreciate everyone's patience, and we're really hoping to get these meals out to people. Are there any questions related to food or transportation?
I have a question, do families need to sign up for meals? Or is it kind of like how we did at the beginning of COVID, where they, if they show up to the bus stop, that meals will be available or?
Yep, there's no sign up required, meals are just gonna be available. The one thing is if, for some reason, they're not seeing a bus, we just ask that they let us know, because then we can check with the bus company. And just make sure that the bus is going there. But there is no sign up required.
Then Lisa, did you have a question?
I do have a question, my understanding is the funding on these was, back when the, you know, last week when the kids were in school. Was funded through the thirty-first of December, do we anticipate that being extended? Or do we anticipate the funding running out early?
Well, we do anticipate it being extended, so we've heard at a federal level for sure that it's getting extended. The state of Minnesota hasn't formally announced that, or I think the last communication we heard is at least through April. So for now, we're just gonna continue offering them until we hear different.
Okay. Terrific.
Okay, so then my next update is on CARES funding. So just a really quick update on that, we received a little over a million dollars for expenditures directly related to COVID nineteen. We will use all of that money before the deadline of December thirtieth. We've done a lot of technology purchases, some cleaning supplies and equipment, individual instructional supplies. So just things that maybe kids used to share. But now, you know, with COVID, we went with them sharing, but you know, now moving to distance learning, now they're able to take some of those items home. And we'll get them back. Additional teaching staff, you know, substitutes that were unique to COVID. COVID facility rental plan review, additional staff planning days, and then childcare, transportation, and staffing. And then we also received some additional money from the three counties that we work with, so Dakota County, we got about seventeen hundred dollar, or seventeen hundred. Washington County, we got about sixteen thousand, and Dakota County is still finalizing what we'll get with them. So they said it would be between twenty to fifty dollars per pupil. So it's a, a range of about eighty thousand to about two hundred thousand, so we're just waiting for that final answer, and then. As you can imagine, there's just a lot of reporting that goes with it, but we're, you know, really thankful that we had the extra money. To support those unique expenditures for this year. Just kind of keeping in mind that. We couldn't code anything to it that we had in our budget, so it's really just cost neutral, it's money coming in, money going out. It's not gonna help our fund balance for this year, but it did help us from, you know, having to use our fund balance to. Cover those expenses related to COVID. Any questions on that one?
So then just quickly on technology, just a reminder that the COVID dollars helped, we have. All kids in our district have technology devices, so we are truly one-to-one right now, we also have access spots. For those that needed them, that includes students and staff. And in addition to that, it's things like our document cameras and, and software packages that we were able to purchase. And are up and running, so that's gonna help us not only this year, but in future years with regard to technology. Jen Reichel's on, and so I'd like her to share a little bit about elementary secondary and what that's looking like right now.
Thank you. So as we shift into distance learning, I want to begin by saying our principals did an amazing job over the summer. Really being my.
Really being mindful of how do we shift from model to model with the least disruption for kids possible? And so as we look to make this shift, uh, some of the differences that we'll find really do enhance what we're seeing. Um, as our opportunity with kiddos. So all of our students K to twelve will have some form of synchronous instruction, but it looks different per level. Our elementaries are looking at how do we, um, optimize the amount of time that a student can sustain focus in one Zoom. Balanced with how many times do we invite a kiddo to log into a Zoom per day? And so grade level teams are really looking at the readiness of their age level and being able to make some decisions based on that. So our primary will likely look a little bit different than our intermediate. Because our kids at kindergarten can do different things than our fourth graders. Um, but each day they, the kiddos will have a synchronous opportunity and then some non-screen time to do practice. And, um, we're inviting families to build a schedule that allows for some movement breaks and those sorts of things. At our secondary level. The biggest change that our kids will see is that they aren't going to be in cohort A or cohort B anymore. They're going to intermingle with all of their friends in their classes. And depending on middle school or high school, there still are opportunities for synchronous learning. We're looking at the high school with maybe fewer opportunities so that, um, though that learning experience can be robust. And then, uh, and after the fact opportunity to practice. Um, but when we see our schedules of that either ten days. Um, with one set of classes to ten days at another at the middle school. Or three classes for about four and a half weeks and then we shift, that stays the same for students. So we're really trying to be mindful of, this is a pattern of behavior that students understand this year. We're going to keep going with it. Um, that I just, I can't say enough, um, how mindful those principals were. And what an amazing job our teachers are doing at wrapping their heads around, okay. So now I have the opportunity to do this, how am I going to do the very best job that I can do with our kids? We have amazing staff and I'm just cheering them on like crazy right now. Do you have any questions for me about elementary, secondary learning models as we shift into distance learning?
Yeah. I'm not seeing anyone unmute. Thank you for all of your hard work with this, I know that this is not necessarily how we. Saw the school year going back in January, so thank you for your leadership and, um, just for our staff for figuring this out.
So with that special education, just updating that, uh, special education right now, uh, with the numbers increasing. We are having special education, uh, be in distance learning full time as well. We'll reevaluate that over the next two weeks, no different than much of, many of our surrounding districts are going to do. Uh, we originally thought that even with our move to distance learning, we'd be able to bring some pockets of kids in. And right now due to numbers, that's just not going to happen. And so we're going to have to reevaluate that as we move closer, uh, to mid-December and see what the likelihood will be to move those people in. And then, uh, finally, community education, um, just some updates there. Our SAC program right now is gearing up for the new, uh, numbers with regard to school age care. So we right now have seventeen middle schoolers and a hundred and nineteen elementary students that are signed up for school age care. Uh, preschool, our school readiness and preschool will continue in person, but our ECSE. So early childhood special ed will move to distance learning. Our ECFE, so family education, they're going to continue to provide a hybrid. Um, as long as, um, it's appropriate based on the governor's orders now, um, as that comes in here in the next twenty-four hours. Our screening has moved to online assessment, so screening our kids for vision and hearing. Um, that will be an in-person at Tilden, but the actual online assessment or the actual online screening assessments for kids. Uh, will be done online. Our youth, uh, enrichment and development, uh, we have, uh, had our first youth impact council. Uh, wait about ten students and they're going to be meeting monthly, um, here for the remainder of the year, uh, through Zoom. And some distance-based servicing that's happening. Classes are going to continue, uh, both in-person and Zoom as they're appropriate. Driver's education, we already have nine kids signed up on a winter interest list. Um, and continuing our behind the wheel, uh, lessons as those are appropriate. The senior center is going to change based on, uh, the governor's orders. Um, here, we'll have to decide in the next couple of days, no different than, um, athletics and activities. Uh, what actually can still happen in person and what's going to have to go, uh. Distance or online. We do still plan to do a Thanksgiving dinner drive up by pickup on Thursday, November nineteenth. And so, uh, that's in the twenty-fifth, so that's still in place. We're still planning things with our adults with disabilities online in November and December. Our GED testing is still taking place, uh, at Tilden. Um, and those spots keep filling up, uh, because that testing facility is limited in the amount of, of. People that it can take at one time. And then facilities is going to take a change here in the next twenty-four hours again, because of the governor's, uh, executive order tonight. So more will come on, on community education, whether it's regarding to childcare, preschool and facilities in the coming days.
And Brian did just send in a question, um, he is just wondering if we're doing anything additional for the special ed families until we can get them back in person.
Yep, so, uh, Megan Miller and, um, her team are working on redoing and modifying their CLPs. Uh, there was a message that went out today to families to give them the heads up. Uh, what's happening and actually I just see Megan's on, so I'm, I'm going to stop answering for Megan and let her answer that question.
That's okay, thank you, good to see you all. Um, yes, we are, we're very fortunate, we have just an amazing team of special services staff here in Hastings. And they did a lot of work on the front end with updating CLPs, um, or creating CLPs so that they can. Uh, transition their students into distance learning, uh, continuing to provide services and supporting students. Um, and then for our students with more intensive, uh, needs that we, um. Dr. McDowell was talking about a moment ago, we are preparing ourselves so that when we, um. Identify as a district that it is safe for us to bring students in in small groups. Um, we will have their, um, due process, their I, their CLPs updated and ready to go. Um, to indicate access to those services, um, because we will need at least a week once we know we're ready, that it's safe. Um, to route transportation stuff so that we can bring those students in. Um, and so we are also working with our, uh, PSAs to support students who are receiving special services at our childcare sites. So they have, um. We have PSAs there during the school hours to help students access their distance learning. Um, like they would similarly in a resource room at school. We've also expanded our virtual accommodations room, uh, we are, we have a secondary and an elementary virtual accommodations room. And those links will be going out, we, uh, to families. So that during the school day, if a student is in need of extra support or assistance. Um, they can log into the virtual accommodations room and break out into a private room with a PSA for that additional help. We also have our, uh, special education advisory council meeting scheduled for the third of December. And so I'm looking forward to having lots of parents, um, attend that meeting if possible to brainstorm more ways we can start to. Um, bring groups of parents together to share ideas, uh, for supporting our students at home. Any other, any questions?
Oh, thank you, and Brian says thank you as well. For covering his question.
So at this point, uh, all right, Mike has popped in, thanks Mike. Um, what we wanted to do, um, as part of maybe a next three months is to really just highlight and give you some updates on what's happening at the different levels. Um, and, um, tonight I've got Mike Johnson here from the high school who really wanted to talk about mental health and distance learning support. Uh, and it's timely based on, uh, how we're shifting into a different learning model. So at that, at this point, I'll turn it over, uh, to Mike Johnson.
Thank you and thank you for having me tonight. Um, wanted to show you is the resources that we had sent parents as part of our distance learning plan, as well as the people who are key contacts. Uh, some of the teams that we have, uh, onsite to serve students. And then also with, uh, just an idea of what would a team possibly do? Our distance learning plan, we have four Cs, connections, communication, consistency and curriculum. Um, we believe the most important are the connections and that's where our heart goes. We want to stay connected with our students at, in all ways that we can. You can see the number of services that are available and we wanted it to look just like the website. So people who are watching can see that this is Hastings High School website with counseling. And these are all of the links that, um, a family or a student could go to. And certainly these are, uh, some of the tried and true links that we've had over the years with graduation requirements, course guides and so on. But we also have added resources for how to contact us during distance learning, mental health and COVID. Uh, peer tutoring, tutoring and academic resources. Uh, again, this was included in our distance learning plan and was sent to our parents. So if I could see the next slide, please. The most important connections we have with our students are staff. And I know you spent a long time talking about connections and students and I appreciate the sensitivity with which you're making decisions. Um, our staff members who are the teachers are, are the day-to-day people who, um, have those positive connections. And we also have our school counseling staff and not in this picture is Melissa Schell, our school psychologist. And, um, we want to stay connected very well with our teachers, with our students there. A lot of times they are the link to helping a student or if they're not seeing a student on, in class or engaging to reach out. And our counselors have made great efforts to make themselves available in any modality that the student may choose. For example, they have open Zoom hours. Their entire office hour when they're working, they have Zoom. They have Google Voice that rolls to their phone safely should they be working at home and certainly email. And then we also know that there are some families that will turn to our resources after hours and we want to make sure that we post the crisis numbers that we have. If I could see the next slide, please. These, these are some examples of some of the teams that we have in support that we have had as well as we've added. Um, one of the, um, one of the pieces I'm, I'm most pleased for our students and our staff is our student assistance team. You can see the roles that the people come together and how important it is for. Uh, our school resource officer to be at the same meeting that we are. Uh, for how many times that we are looking at doing home visits, our well checks. And our school police rate, resource officer is knowing of the students and knowing of their issues and that can really help. In the community as well as within school. Um, so that's our, our student assistance team, we meet, uh, every week. Our, uh, number one goal is to support students and brainstorm. And, uh, there are times that we, um, come up with some great ideas and sometimes we need to reach out to other people. In special services, uh, again, a fantastic staff where we have case managers. Who are now working with twenty to twenty-two students. Um, we have supports that are there with department chairs, school psychologists. And then also organizations like voc, voc, vocational rehabilitation services, VRS. Which can help students in special services or on a five oh four plan. Uh, find some ways to get out into the community that could lead them to work. I'll skip the distance learning team, support team, because that's on our next slide. But I also wanted to show, for, show for individuals. We have some, um, some excellent supports. That are spread thin to help individual students, Canvas Health, uh, is within the Hastings schools. Uh, here at the high school, I believe there are twenty-four students that are connected with that therapist. Sternown Associates is for students, families as well as employee assistants. That's a continual referral process by which we, uh, work with all of those, uh, roles of people. Family Resource Coordinator, uh, with a social work background, and then we also have our school psychologist. If you could see the next slide, this is an example of one of our teams. Um, and when we, uh, came to you last spring and we're talking about mental health supports. You can see the top right pyramid, the, um, multi, multi-system tiers. Multi-tiered systems of support, NTSS. Where we have tier one supports for all, tier two, which now we're in specialized groups and tier three, which are those individual pieces. We're trying to build all of those levels to support all of our students. One new team is our distance learning support team. That is dedicated again to have a team of people come together. Where we can try and look at to see what some of the issues are, whether they're academic or mental health. And then come up with some interventions. So this is a, again, a specific time throughout the week. We're going to track students very closely. We're going to try and problem solve and present problems as well as get input from the teacher and involve parents heavily. There's about twelve or thirteen different interventions for academic as well as mental health. And I, I just chose three to put them in there. But these are, these are the kinds of things that this team will work on to try and support our students for distance learning. Again, it's about connections, it's about making sure that we have the support for the students that we need. And then how do we support families, uh, to do that as well? So that is, that is a new team that we've developed. And then the last slide, please. Students sometimes want to hear the experience of other students. And we have fantastic peer helpers and I know that they've been at the board meeting. And they're kind-hearted students, uh, who have been trained to work with a couple of our, our counselor and school psychologists. To be where the students are in order to get them support. We've also been curating, um, anonymous tips from students. That students can read from other students on the website. So if they're looking and trying to get help, what would another student say about how can I get through distance learning? Um, it was really neat because our counselors put this out to the teachers. And the teachers put it out to the students. And it just warms my heart that the students, hundreds of tips were coming in. So how do you manage this because they care so much about their classmates? Uh, there's mental health resources that are here and again, how can we contact? Connections with Kel O'Leary, we have a program called Community in Schools, which is an organization that the district partners with, with United Way. And Kel O'Leary is, uh, one of the caseworkers with a caseload of about fifty to sixty. Trying to work with students on those interventions. Um, I would encourage people who are listening tonight to, uh, go to our website. Go to the middle school website and look at the number of resources that we have. What we didn't show here is community resources, family resources, what the county can offer, what the state can offer. That we really want this to be a hub for families and community members to go to, to seek out support and then contact us, uh, so we can help.
Any questions before we move on?
It's not looking like it.
All right, then I'll move back to Jen Reichel. Because we have our equity action planning team that is now up and running at full speed.
Thank you, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So I wanted to begin by, uh, reminding or revisiting what the goals of this particular equity action planning team are. In the email that went out inviting all staff to consider whether or not they'd want to volunteer on this team. The language used was, we want to discuss our district's current reality. And recommend next steps for our professional and systemic growth as we work to continuously improve how we best serve our students. Through the lens of equity. And then as, after we received all sorts of people who were interested, we need to make some decisions. And really our goal when formulating the team was to have balanced representation. From pre-K to twelve, from all of the buildings, making sure that we could. Touch as many departments and grade levels as possible. We also were, uh, mindful of how do we balance level of experience? We certainly didn't want a whole team that was only brand new to our district, nor did we want a whole team that was all veteran to our district. So as we were making, you know, some of those decisions, we said, all right, we've got a veteran here, let's balance that with a new person just so we could get. Uh, varied perspectives. So after we determined who was on that team, Dr. McDowell sent out a letter both to the team and to the district. Letting, um, everyone know about this team. And in that letter, the language that we use is we will collectively design, deliver and be champions of anti-racist actions. And systems to actively provide a safe and supportive place for all our current and future students to learn. So if the staff didn't think they had important and big work to do with those two, I'm not sure where they were living. Because these two statements say to me, there are years and years of work ahead of us. Um, but it was, I think. But it was, I think, people felt really pleased at the, the call to action and the degree to which we were taking this work seriously. So our process so far, as we have framed the work for our team, we're acknowledging that there are three levels of growth that each of us on the team has our own independent work to do as far as checking who we are and what we understand and growing as individuals. Parallel to that individual growth, we also know that as a team, we collectively need to grow. And then it's through that individual and collective work that this group can support growth when it, within our school community. It's been really affirming to hear as we've talked to some colleagues who are doing equity work in other districts that as we've framed this individual collective and community work, that that seems to be the way that good equity work is done. In our initial meetings, and I think we've had three total meetings at this point. We've created our norms. We have created our initial draft of our guiding change document, as you know, which shows the current context, the desired results and the unacceptable means. And then we've made a commitment that at each meeting, we're going to provide some space to either celebrate the successes that we're finding as we connect with our colleagues in the work that we're doing or debrief some of those challenges as we know that this work is hard work and it's personal work. And our group needs to be a place where people can say, this is a challenging conversation that I had. Not sure that I did it right. You know, help me reframe how this could go. Or in that celebratory, we had a person on our team say, you know what? After the excitement and affirmation of this group, I was able to have one of those courageous conversations with one of my colleagues and push back on some language they were using and helped reframe how they might do that differently. So as individuals, we're taking little steps to do what we can to influence our system. A couple of pieces that we've been working on recently are developing a common understanding of equity related vocabulary. So the first time we dug into some vocabulary, we talked about culture, race and ethnicity. And we're able to frame what do each of those things mean and how are they different from each other? And we walked away from that meeting with some analogies that we asked our colleagues to ask us about so that we could revisit what those analogies meant. And then most recently, we did some work around what does equity mean? And then on the horizon, we'll be talking about what is racism? What is anti racism? What's cultural competency? And we know that that helps us recognize where do we need to learn and grow and know more? And where are those things that we feel particularly confident right now? One of the things that I'm most proud of right now, as far as our group is we allocate a certain number or a bit of our time at the end of each meeting to check in with what are the pieces that we did today that we want to share with our colleagues? And then we draft a communications that, that this group has access to. And then the group is responsible to share with their colleagues in their buildings. So it's not a Jen Reichel or Gabe Moreno are sending out communication, but the people on the team are the ones who are responsible to send that out. And then they're interacting and fielding questions with their colleagues. One of the things that the team was really eager to do was with each communication, provide an action step for their colleagues to do. And we've started out really small, like, hey, think about your practices and how might you do this? Or ask one of these team members about the analogy. Or here are the people who were involved in the book study this summer. Check in with one of those people and find out what did they like best about their book? So it's easy things. We're not asking for the hard stuff yet because we want to celebrate those quick wins and invite people to our process. And the, the other piece is our timeline. So right now we're meeting every other week. And one of our goals is to offer some professional development. And initially, Gabe is doing a couple of one hour PD sessions on Wednesdays in the afternoon with the idea that over time, the professional development delivery wouldn't be allocated to one person, but we would call on the expertise that were growing from within our team. And that they over time would be willing to develop a module and facilitate it for their colleagues. And as we walked into this process, we knew that we wanted two very clear deliverables. We want to have some bite sized action steps for our colleagues that are reflected in semester two practices. What those are, we're not sure yet, but that's going to be part of our upcoming conversations that our team has. And then we also know that this team will be asked to think about what do we need to have in place for workshop week in the fall of 21, 22 that will set the stage for next year's work? So this group knows that it's not a one and done. We're not going to do, you know, throw, throw everything at the wall and see what sticks, but really be mindful of, you know, being the intentional pieces. And then anything else that this group comes up with as this is our deliverable, much like some of the things that have already begun to come out of the team with the communication and the asks of their colleagues. And then on the horizon, I talked about our professional development. And, and so that's being delivered synchronously via Zoom. Our goal is to offer some asynchronous professional development to complement those synchronous sessions. We know that some folks either aren't ready to engage in this work with their colleagues, but they may be interested and ready to do it on their own to begin with. Or that timeframe that we have on Wednesdays might just not be the right time. So we want to provide some learning opportunities that aren't at a specific time, at a, in a specific place synchronously. Gabe has recently gone through the training to be able to deliver the intercultural development inventory, the IDI. And so our plan is to have each member of our team participate in the IDI. And that's followed by an individual debrief and a group debrief. With, and with the IDI, the next step then would be to make sure that all of our administrators participate in the administration of that as well. And then one additional piece, we have begun to have conversations with Equity Alliance, which is an organization that supports school districts and one of their pillars is equity work. And so Gabe and I have had a conversation with one of their partners seeking out support in defining the arc of our work. And then maybe after we've kind of hit the, the maximum capacity of our internal expertise, then we might look for them to provide things. But right now we want to lean on what people already know and have, and are able to share with each other. That was the end. What questions might you have for me about our Equity Action Planning Team?
Just a second, I have a note from Brian. He just says, thank you for all of your work. And please be mindful as you move through this journey of how privilege can impact your lens and recognize until this is mandatory pockets of challenge will continue to exist.
Yes, and we, we've talked about both of those things. And I think one of the things as we look to our norms is to do our due diligence to consider whose voice is not yet at part of our group? And how do we invite that lens and that perspective in? So I appreciate that, Brian. And we also know that at some point this needs to be compulsory. But at this point, the will of the group is invitational because the more we can build capacity of invitational, the easier it will be to tip that balance to say, all right, we've got 70% of the people who have participated in this, 30%, it's now your turn to get on board. But we're not there yet.
Yeah, we had kind of talked about that similar to how Avid had kind of started with a select group and then it moved and expanded and has kind of grown into something bigger. I was just going to mention another one of your deliverables is that the group is going to be working with the policy committee to on the equity policy that we've been working on. And so they are working on some of that language for us as well.
They are so.
That should be coming in December to the board for a first reading.
We started today, Kelsey, to work on that language. And they were so excited to be able to do that work and thankful that we had not only today, but some percolation time and the opportunity to come back and really look at what is it that might be missing from there? Or how do we change that language to really get at what we're hopeful for? So thank you, the, the group is thankful for that opportunity.
Yeah, I think that'll be really great. And so like I said, that should be coming forward for a first reading in December, so.
Well, I know that was a really long superintendent's report, but I wanted to make sure that you, that folks understood the amount of work that's taking place in addition to just COVID right now. We haven't stopped. I don't need to say much about the amazing team we have and the fact that everybody is still pulling together, moving in the same directed direction, challenging one another to do things better. And you know, it's slow work and it's hard work, but, but the team is, is continuing to row the boat together. And it's, it's awesome.
Well, thank you so much. All right, is there any more with the superintendent's report?
That's it.
It's like Mary Poppins' bag, you know? Never know. All right, well, that was great. Lots of updates, so. It's good to hear about everything going on. So then next up, we'll move on to the fundraising report. I assume Jen will be going over this one.
So this is part of the policy that twice a year, the board will review the fundraisers that are currently or happened in the, the last timeframe. So this report is for May through October. And there's just a few fundraisers listed on there. If you have any questions, I can maybe answer them. I don't know all the details on each one of the fundraisers, but.
Right, does anyone have any questions? Nope. All right.
So then I can move, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was going to say the building construction, yep, so we can go right into it.
And that one, again, there's not a whole lot of changes right now. The one project that we did move to in process is the water cooler project. And that is at Tilden McCullough and Middle School. But other than that, there were no other changes to that report.
Does anyone have any questions about the report? Nope. All right, so the student enrollment snapshot is right here as well.
And on that one, we just tried to add the information we were able to get. Brian, you had requested some homeschooling number comparison, so we added that on there. The tricky thing is with homeschooling numbers, we actually had to reach out to those districts. There's not a current MDE report that we can use to get those numbers. So we were only able to get it from the districts that responded. But I think it shows that we are, you know, right in line with the other districts. We saw an increase in 2021, just like many of the other districts. So I think that was our, our main, you know, just trying to provide some comparison information there.
Thank you. As so, any questions about that one? Or any other information we'd be interested in seeing? Okay. So, Policy Committee summary, Stephanie?
There's, there's really nothing for me to, to talk about at this point because over the last three hours, we touched on every single one of these. So we continue to do great things and, and you know, we're, we're going to keep at it. So pending your questions, that's, that's my update.
Okay, so are there any questions for Stephanie? All right. Then we will move into the action items. So first is the consent agenda. And again, if community members would like to see exactly what's in the consent agenda that is on board book. So. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. So we'll move into the items for individual action, beginning with the Fund 45. Which is a motion to set the actuarial determined contribution for the para irrevocable trust fund, Fund 45, per the liability study. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. Next up is a motion to set aside the pension ASL funds per the actuarial study.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. Next up is a motion to accept the 2019, 2020 audit report that we received earlier.
Second.
Any discussion? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. Okay, now we're into the things we've moved down here. Motion to approve the non-class size budget reduction options. Again, this has removed the fund balance transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on this one? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, a motion to approve Policy 419, the tobacco free environment policy.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is a motion to approve Policy 516, student medication.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve Policy 609, religion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. A motion to approve Policy 616, the school district system accountability.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Whew, we're moving through them now. All right, so now we're at Policy 102, the equal educational opportunity.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to point out for people that are watching or have been following, these are, these haven't been going through the first reading, second reading, the next whole chunk of policies. It's just been a correction or an updating of names or titles. So don't be surprised, be like, oh my gosh, I didn't hear anything about this policy. It's just a, it's a housekeeping, the next whole big chunk.
Thank you for that clarification. Yep, these are ones that there have been no significant changes to, so.
With that, is there a way to lump these together?
Yes. Are you making a motion, Scott?
I, I am making a motion that we take, uh, let's see here, come on.
Read them off.
Yep, one moment. I move that we consider the following policies for approval in one grouping. Policy one oh two, equal educational opportunity. Policy four oh one, equal employment opportunity. Policy four oh two, disability nondiscrimination. Policy four one three, harassment. Scrolled too far. Harassment and violence. Policy five two one, student disability nondiscrimination. Policy five two two, student sex nondiscrimination. Policy five two eight, student, student parental, family and marital status nondiscrimination. Policy six oh four, inclusive education program and Policy seven two two, public data requests.
Second.
Is there any discussion other than well done? No, all right, all those in favor of approving the list of policies, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Do we have anything else? Otherwise, uh, the future meetings are set up. So we do have a Policy Committee meeting set up on November twenty-fourth. And a reminder that the, in December, the regular board meeting and the work session are are collapsed. There's only the one. Um, but we do have an optional work session in December, should we need it, so.
Well, as it stands right now, we we aren't going to use that optional work session, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Just.
This was a heavy, this was a heavy lift tonight.
Yep, just for clarification, on December, December nine, is it?
Yep.
Yep. Time are we beginning? I have it at six, six till nine. Are we keeping that time or did we change the time to start earlier to do the work session portion? Or are we doing the work session portion starting at six?
I still have that we're meeting at nine.
At six?
Okay, that's what I mean, yes. Just, all right, upside down.
All right, very good.
Yeah, my understanding was that we were not doing the work session that we had talked about on the night. We were just doing a regular business meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we were trying to hold, hold time to do two work sessions if need be for budget adjustment. But I think we're we're at a place where if we hear just an update, we can move it to action in the ninth.
Yep.
So they will, there will be no meeting at all on the second, and the one on the ninth is just a board meeting. Regular board meeting.
Yep.
Okay, and then I'm sorry, Bob?
I just said, thank you for putting in the time tonight.
Oh, for sure. Um, and this is just a something else that we probably need to get on the list. I know Jen's talked about this, we want to decide it today is we should probably get a finance committee together, and maybe we can hear something about that at between now and the next regular board meeting. Just to, just to start. Not that we have to have it before that time, but just to understand what it would be for. My takeaway is to get some assumptions clarified going into the next budget development. Plus just stuff, finance stuff. I don't know enough to actually use finance words, I can just say finance stuff.
Ryan says he's on it, so.
Yeah, he's on the finance committee too. That'd be cool. We stand ready to work. I now feel very intimidated by policy.
I know, and we have three of the upcoming meetings listed on here.
I know.
All right, so there is a motion to adjourn on the table.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
The big meeting tonight.
Yep.
Be safely, Bob and Jen.
Be well.
Take care, be.